Calling the April 11th, 2011, meeting to order of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Municipality of Anchorage. If the Secretary, please call the role.
Nancy Gies.
Here.
Jim Frederick.
Here.
Connie Yoshimura.
Here.
Arthur Isham.
Here.
Bruce Phelps.
Here.
Stacy Dean.
Here.
Terry Parks.
Here.
Dana Prue.
Here.
Richard Wilson.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Ms. Yoshimura, we've got some adjustments to the agenda. If you'd please take care of that.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. In the matter of case number 2011-032 and S. 11864, I move for postponement to May 2nd.
It's been seconded. These postponements are at the request of the petitioner. Is there any objection? Okay, that passes unanimously. So anybody that's here for the Potter Creek Development Case 2011-032, or for Potter Creek Development S. 11864, they're not going to be heard this week. They're going to be heard on the 2nd of May. Okay, Ms. Yoshimura, would you please take care of disclosures?
Yes, Ms. Dean, do you have anything to disclose this evening? No. Commissioner Pruez.
No.
Ms. Gies.
No.
Mr. Fredericks.
No.
Commissioner Wilson.
No.
Commissioner Parks.
Yes, I have one. In the case 2011-013, I'm a property owner in a partnership that owns nine and a half acres right across the street from this project.
Do you have, but you have no financial interest?
No financial interest.
All right. Thank you for the additional information. Mr. Isham.
I have nothing to disclose.
And I need to disclose, as I have in the past, that I am a former co-owner of Track 4B West Park subdivision, but I no longer have an ownership interest in it. And then I also need to disclose that the Peterson Group and I have a partnership in another development. But I have no financial interest in the zoning conditional use for a planned unit development on this particular case.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Yoshimura. I think on this particular thing, because you are in partnership with them, we probably ought to direct you to participate. Just, I think that would be appropriate. So could we have a motion to direct Ms. Yoshimura to participate?
So moved.
Okay, do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Pruez. Okay, we've directed Ms. Yoshimura to participate. Are there any comments?
What are the precedents in this? We've sometimes had people, you know, who were in a firm, but didn't, well, are there precedents that anyone can remember?
I think so, because we had cases where I think we directed the former chairman to participate because she was involved, I believe with a clutney and stuff like that, and we would direct her to participate. In this case, not, it's simply because she is in a partnership with them, and I, you know, if we have problems with that, we need to say it. If not, fine, you know.
I guess we should ask Ms. Yoshimura if she's able to regard this case totally on its own merits without feeling any influence from any connections she might have. I do.
Any other comments? Any objections? Good. So we now will move to the consent agenda. Take a positive motion for approval of the consent agenda. Been moved by Ms. Dean, seconded by Mr. Parks. Is there any cases that need to be pulled? Is there any objection to approval of the consent agenda? That would be item D. 4A, case 2011-041. No objection, that's approved. Okay, we'll now move on to our public hearings. First public hearing is case number 2011-013. Petitioner is the Peterson Group, and it's a zoning conditional use for a planned unit Let's hear the report from staff, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. 123 public hearing notices were mailed for this item. We received many back in opposition to the proposal. We've also received a letter from the Sand Lake Community Council in opposition to the proposal. The West Park Homeowners Association Executive Board submitted a letter in support of the proposal. And just a few minutes ago, I placed at each of your chairs, a letter in support from Carl Gottstein. This is a conditional use application for a planned unit development in the R. 1A district, the area known as the Kincaid gravel pits. The proposal is subject to review under the general standards of conditional uses, excuse me, the general standards of conditional uses, and the specific standards for planned unit developments. The proposal is successful would grant approximately density of 5.4 dwelling units per acre. Moving to page four, brief discussions of the comprehensive plan type review and the zoning that exists on the property. For the comprehensive plan review, we looked at four plans. Anchorage 2020, the comprehensive plan from 1982. We also looked at the proposed land use plan map, proposed but not adopted, that's from 2006. And we also looked through the Sand Lake area redevelopment plan from 1982. We're looking for specific conformance with Anchorage 2020 and with the 1982 plan, and we're looking for general conformance with the other two plans. The zoning, as I mentioned, is R. 1A. There's been a long history of this property. If anyone has specific questions, please feel free to ask. Don't want to spend too much time on that. There is one item I would like to highlight because many letters from the public brought this out. This is a change in density proposed by the PUD, but it is not a rezoning. I think that's been satisfactorily explained to everyone. And there's also been some concern in the letters in response that roads, water, sewer, other infrastructure and so forth could not handle this increase in capacity. Traffic did review their TIA from this, did look at the new proposal. AWU did comment on water and sewer. The mass transit folks all looked at it. All of the infrastructure in place is adequate to handle what is on the ground now and what is proposed by this application. The site is a closed gravel pit, zoned R. 1A. It has steep slopes on the Sand Lake, Diamond, and West Park sides. Some of those slopes are in excess of 20%. The slopes are well-treed for the most part and are going to be preserved as part of this development. The existing vegetation on the south and east property lines is quite extensive. It does need a little bit of enhancement to meet the buffer standards, but we'll get into that when we get to specifics. Muni, water, and sewer lines are on-site and will be extended to the individual dwelling units. The proposal is a conditional use for planned unit development to exceed the density normally allowed in R. 1A. R. 1A, you could typically expect to get four units per acre, but the PUD allows up to six units per acre. The applicant's proposing five phases, approximately two to four years per phase through the year 2021, and at build-out, there will be a total of 216 dwelling units. That is 76 single-family units and 70 duplexes. The duplexes then would be a total of 140 dwelling units. The intent of a PUD is to allow greater flexibility in the mix of uses, design, density, and so forth, in exchange for consolidating open space and other natural features. PUDs are generally recognized to be site-specific, that is, they are supposed to capitalize on the natural features that are there, preserve or enhance them in exchange for this density increase. The overall goal is that with all of this increase in density, though, the population densities and lot coverage are still consistent with what are called for in the comprehensive plan. The intent of the request is for a final conditional use approval, and that generally means density, general building pad locations, general street locations, landscaping, and so forth. But on PUDs, we generally, that is, the department generally asks the commission's permission that on large-scale projects to be developed over long periods of time, that we reserve some items for administrative review. Those items are towards the top of the page, next to the bullet points on page number eight. That would include final building designs, minor adjustments to building pad locations, adjustments to locations for the required landscaping, and a final landscaping plan. Those would be reviewed administratively, but should the department find that we cannot come to a decision or an agreement with an applicant, that the item would ultimately brought back to the commission for resolution. Starting now on page nine with the general standards for conditional use, that's AMC Be fairly brief with these, as the department believes that all of these standards are met, and for the most part, they are covered more specifically when we get into the actual residential PUD standards. Item A on page nine is that this proposal furthers the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan and conforms to the comprehensive development plan in the manner required in 2105. As I mentioned earlier, we did review this proposal with the 2020 plan, the 82 plan, the Sand Lake redevelopment plan, and the proposed land use map dated 2006. The proposal is compliant with those plans. The petition site is proposing 5.4 units per acre under a PUD. They could have up to six dwelling units per acre. Comprehensive plan policies 3, 7, 8, 11, 12, 16, 45, 49, 50, and 55 are all applicable to and supported by this development. Item B, that this item conforms to the standards in this title and the regulations under this title, that's making reference to the specific conditional use standards for planned unit developments, so I'm going to skip into those, and we'll come back to the general standards in a minute. On page 10 are the directions to the planning commission for evaluating a planned unit development. There are five criteria, brief discussion of each of them. The five criteria are what the planning commission will evaluate to find that the planned unit development can be approved. The department believes that all five of those criteria have been met. Page 11, excuse me, 2150-130B, the general provisions for residential PUDs. Very broadly, respond quickly to these. Petition site meets the minimum size, it's 39.9 acres. Building design and site development involving excessive grading will be reviewed for structures, parking areas, driveways, roadways, et cetera. This project all generally complies. The drawings submitted at this early time are not very specific, but they will be reviewed by project management and engineering, by traffic, by fire. The drainage people will all be taking a very close look at these. And I should say at this point that each site, as the phases are developed, will be coming in with very specific plans, and we'll be taking a second look at them at that time. Regarding drainage, since surface water runoff is a concern in this area, the existing drainage is generally towards the middle of the property because it's the lowest from the previous gravel excavation project. But as the property is developed, the overall surface drainage is going to be directed to the southeast side of the property, where it can then be moved off-site through a culvert passing under Diamond Boulevard. There are snow storage areas shown on the phasing plan. Those snow storage areas are for driveways and common ownership property, snow storage. The roads within the project are public streets, and the muni, in clearing snow from those, will be using the five-foot-wide area from the back of the curb to the side of the, to the edge of the sidewalk for municipal snow storage. Traffic access, this is item three on page 12. Internal streets intended to serve the PUD must have proposed or existing connection to streets. The traffic from this development was all going to access West Park Drive. The internal streets and the access to West Park have been and will continue to be reviewed by traffic, fire, and PMNE, and have been found to be consistent with their requirements. A formal traffic impact analysis was completed back when Kincaid Estates was subdivided into tracks 1 through 10. And as I mentioned before, the traffic department did look at that TIA again, looked at what was on the ground now, and looked at the impacts of this proposal, and determined that an update to the TIA was not required. And again, just for emphasis, I'll mention that that statement is also true, generally speaking, for the other infrastructure in this area, especially water and sewer. Item four, utility installation shall be underground. That complies. Item five, conformance with the comprehensive plan. It is met. We've discussed that a couple of times. Item six, landscaping. Buffer landscaping is required on right-of-ways adjacent to collector or greater streets, and to any non-residential uses within the PUD. There are no non-residential uses, so that's not an issue. Practically speaking, there exists buffer landscaping along Sand Lake and Diamond Boulevards right now. However, it doesn't fully meet the definition because it's lacking in evergreens, so we will be asking the applicant to plant a percentage of spruce trees to go along with that. The internal landscaping is shown on a concept plan that you have. We are asking for an updated concept plan to be submitted to show approximate numbers and locations, but this condition will specifically be met when the actual landscape plans for each phase are developed. Item seven on page 14, fire safety requirements. Fire has reviewed this for the internal road width, driveways, entrance onto West Park, building separation, and so forth. The project does appear to comply. But again, with each phase of development, this information will be submitted in even more detail and will be reviewed again. On page 14, 2150-130C, now to the specific standards for residential PUDs. Density has already been mentioned, that complies. Number two, a major issue in a PUD is open space. Thirty percent of the total property area of the PUD must be usable open space, and at least one-half of the usable open space must be contiguous, not less than 2,000 square feet in area, not less than 30 feet in its smallest dimension, and may not exceed 20% slope. Of that, 30% usable open space, between 12 and 50% must be reserved for yards of the residence of the individual units. This does comply. There is a calculation at the bottom of page 14 and the top of page 15 which gives you the actual numbers. Item three on page 15, building height is governed by the underlying zoning district, which for R. 1A is 35 feet. Number four, permitted uses are limited to residential and accessory uses, convenience establishments, and personal or professional services. The project complies. This is strictly residential PUD. No commercial uses are proposed. The applicant has even stated that he's not going to allow sheds on the property. Item five, design, this complies. There are no proposed non-residential uses. Pedestrian connections are shown throughout the project from east to west within the PUD to the north, to the adjacent track two, and there is also a connection shown from track one up to Sand Lake Boulevard. We especially like that one because mass transit has a bus route and a planned bus stop coming, hopefully within the next five years for that general location. Page 16, buffer landscaping required. We've already discussed that. Item D on page 16, adjacent buildings must be separated from each other by half the distance of the height of the taller building. That generally complies, but again, we will see that specifically on the phase plan for each portion of the property. There may be, it is understood, some minor juggling of building pad locations in order to meet that separation. Stream buffers, it's not applicable, no known streams on-site. The walls and ceiling floor assemblies, common to any two units, must have an STC acoustic rating of 55 and a minimum of five-hour rate, and a minimum fire rating of one hour. The project will comply with this for the duplexes. It's also important to note that this property, as is most of Kincaid Estates, is aligned with the north-south runway at the international airport, so we've asked the applicant to place a notes regarding airport noise on the, excuse me, in the homeowner's documents. Item G on page 16, required parking for residential shall be provided with an electrical outlet. The parking's going to be internal in garages, or if the homeowners need required parking in their driveways, they will have an outside electrical outlet. And homeowner's agreement, proposed articles of incorporation have been attached to your package, and we'll get the final version before any real property conveyance takes place. That is the end of the specific items, so the code now takes us back to the last of the general standards for conditional use, 2150-020. Item B on page 17, that the project will not have a permanent negative impact on the items listed below, and underlined for emphasis, substantially greater than that anticipated from permitted development. Item A, pedestrian and vehicular traffic circulation and safety. This complies. The project's been reviewed by PMNE, traffic, the fire department, and those reviews will be extended during the site plan review for each phase. Item B, demand for an availability of public facilities and services. Water, sewer, streets have all been reviewed by the applicable agencies, and there is no anticipated need for any improvements in that area, and no impact expected greater than that anticipated from permitted development. Item C at the bottom of the page, noise, air, water, and other forms of environmental pollution, apart from the construction period for the project, not expecting anything unusual. Again, the noise comment because of the location of the property in relation to the airport. And item D on the top of page 18, the maintenance of compatible and efficient development patterns and land use intensities. That was fairly well-covered under the comprehensive plan issues. The density is a little higher than what is in the neighborhood, but it is permitted by a planned unit development, and the infrastructure in place for this area is capable of handling the density that is proposed. Mr. Chairman, the department recommends approval. We have conditions on pages 18, 19, 20, and 21. Thank you.
Does the commission have any questions, or staff? Ms. Yoshimura?
Thank you. Through the chair. Mr. Barrett, on page 10, it says all usable open space has less than 20% slope as required by code. Is that an average, or is there no slope that is greater than 20% that's open space?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Yoshimura, the way I like to think of it is, they cannot count it if any of the slope is greater than 20%. So we actually had Mr. Hoffman go back a couple of times and do another calculation to exclude anything that did not meet the dimensional requirements or is in excess of 20%.
This might be more appropriate to the petitioner, but it would appear that the developer is putting up the fence along West Park Drive, but on the backs of, but on the back of the units that back up to Big Bend Loop, that is an owner-installed fence, and by owner-installed fence, do we mean the owner of the single-family and the duplex condominiums?
Commissioner Yoshimura, my understanding is that for fences at the perimeter of the private yard area, it would be the owner of that individual unit. We do have a condition somewhere on those four pages regarding fences and submission of a fence plan from the applicant before anything actually begins. So we'll get more detail from the applicant, I'm sure.
But those conditions don't require the petitioner to install the fence along the back of those units?
No, ma'am. All we've asked for is if they're going to install fences, we want to see a plan, and we want to see what the fences look like.
Have you had any discussions about buffering between Big Bend and these duplexes and single-family?
Commissioner Yoshimura, we've discussed it internally. Yes, other than just some residential landscaping, we've not come down with anything. I would like to point out that the setback, or the amount of yard between the properties abutting Big Bend, the backyards are 30 to 40 feet deep.
Mm-hmm.
And if the developer had left the property and developed it as R. 1A, those backyards would only be 10 feet deep, or could only be 10 feet deep.
Could only be 10 feet deep.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Pruez?
Thank you. Mr. Barrett, on page 19, on number six, one of your recommendations is that the applicant, on your conditional approval, the applicant shall investigate building construction techniques to mitigate and reduce airport noise impacts to interior noise levels of the homes. That seems like a pretty broad statement. Is there any more definitive you can give? Or is it, I mean, is there something, there's an industry standard based on the noise levels that I'm reading down here, 60 to 70 DN Ls, I guess?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Pruez, yes, it's pretty much an industry standard. As we started going through all of this, it turns out that most standard building practices are going to bring the buildings to that standard. There are a few extra things you can do. Vents going through the roof, bathroom vents, kitchen vents, or vents to the outside, a sidewall can either be an elbow joint or not aligned in a north-south direction, but it becomes very minor because the basic construction standards of the units will probably meet that standard already.
So there won't be downstream airport requirements for them to change windows, or any of the things that we're currently seeing in that part of the country?
Correct. And we've asked the applicant to make that clear to buyers by having it in his homeowner's documents.
So would it be investigate and implement, a better terminology?
Implement would require testing of a finished structure and getting a compliant jet aircraft to fly overhead. We could do it. I understand your reasoning. It's more comprehensive language, it's more complete. I'll leave that up to the commission if you want to.
Well, if you're going to investigate something, then something either happens or doesn't happen. If you investigate it, and it's, and you're going to, and you're going to use some techniques, you're actually going to implement what you've investigated. I don't think you have to fly over. I think it'd be an industry standard, as you, as you mentioned. I was just curious about if that would be more. I was just curious about if that would be more appropriate sentence.
If we're going to require the applicant to comply with that noise standard, yes, it would be more appropriate language.
So does, is, does that, does that first sentence require him to do anything other than just investigate?
No, sir, it does not.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Chambers, I got you on here, what?
Through the chair, just any, Commissioner Yoshimura's question regarding the buffering against the residents adjacent to Big Bend, the AMC twenty-one, forty-five, two-hundred transition buffering standards, addresses a couple different methods to be applied when it is not addressed otherwise, it's not really addressed in PUDs on how to apply buffering against adjacent densities or, or uses, and it applies to standards, a fifteen to, a fifteen-foot in certain situations, as in multifamily against single-family, goes up to thirty-foot for more higher intensity uses, or a, a buffer of similar-sized developable lots in between the two developments. And so this is a, a medium between the fifteen-foot, and providing a whole row of developable lots in between. This is what was resolved, based on, just to further explain what Mr. Barrett had said. Thank you. Through the chair, yes, twenty-one, forty-five, two-hundred, there's a, the standards are transition space is applied to conditional use, it would be, take one of the following forms. A tier of lots, and these are developable lots, a tier of lots conforming to the average lot width and building setback of the adjacent protected lots. B, open space in a cluster, PUD conforming to this title, this is a PUD, obviously. Third is a peripheral buffer yard containing vegetation, natural topographic barriers or screening structures. Or you could do something of a similar effect. So what is going on here, it gives a schedule of what the distance, if you're doing a, a buffer space instead of a tier of developable lots, as Mr. Barrett said, if it was a tier of developable lots, or something akin to that, it would have had a smaller yard setback in between. So what was done here was a, the, another form of having a similar effect, it was sort of option three D under the transition buffering standards, which would be greater than the fifteen-foot buffer space of multifamily against single-family, and instead, bring it up to over thirty feet to provide a greater area in between. And also the option to have those additional fences in some of the private yards to provide additional screening and buffering. Thank you.
Any further questions for staff? Okay, before we get into the public hearing, I want to read the rules tonight, since we seem to have a rather large audience in attendance. I am going to be very strict on the timing, so, you know, keep that in mind. So a person's wish to testify will follow the following time limits established on our rules of procedure, and the petitioner, including all of their representatives, have a total of ten minutes, and part of that time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representatives of groups such as community councils and PTAs, et cetera, will have five minutes, and then individuals will have three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within twenty days after the Planning and Zoning Commission's final decision. And finally, any individual may request written findings from any commission decision within seven days. So we'll go ahead right now and hear from the petitioner.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and fellow commissioners. I'm Bob Peterson, owner and president of the Peterson Group. I would like to reserve two minutes of our time for rebuttal after the public comments.
Fine.
Thank you. Peterson Group is a building and development company which I started twenty-eight years ago. Since its inception, we have built over seventeen hundred homes in the municipality of Anchorage, including many of the nicest condominium projects, we think. Before you is our best project yet. With me this evening is Trevor Edmondson, to my left. Trevor is the Peterson Group's Development Manager, and you'll hear from him in a minute. Also with me are a few professionals that have worked on this project. Dave Grenier, to my right, is a civil engineer with Triad Engineering. Tony Hoffman, again, next to Dave, is a land surveyor with Land Tech. And finally, Dan Young, behind Tony, is a hydrologist with Tarsat. These gentlemen are here to answer any technical questions that may arise this evening. So for the record, we agree with staff findings, but would like to clarify a few items. On page eight of the report, it states items two, three, and five appear to be met. We believe that we have shown the creative use of land, design, and other components, and we have met the intent of that item. On page nine, the report states, item two, grading plan generally complies. We believe that we have completely complied with the grading requirement. Aside from those, we have one more, and it's just a clarification regarding page nineteen of the report, the secondary access connecting Phases One and Two. We would like it on the record that the temporary secondary access roads between Phases One and Two will be built to satisfy fire truck weight requirements. The Peterson Group purchased this forty-acre parcel in December of two thousand and nine. We had for some time been searching for a location, had the right environment, the infrastructure to accommodate another project similar to our Discovery Park project, which has been very successful in the Southport neighborhood. Prior to our purchase, we met with muni, muni leadership and staff to verify that in some form they would support a condominium project on this property. With our preliminary thumbs up, we purchased the property, and immediately commenced on a very involved and protracted planning process with that pursuit in mind. After literally hundreds of meetings, and almost eighteen months of planning, we were finally ready. Once we had our initial plan, which generally met with municipal staff approval, we embarked on a comprehensive community awareness process. Talking with Lisa Maguire, Maguire's staff, meeting with Mia Costella, Harriet Drummond, Ernie Hall, the West Park Board of Directors, and finding the Sand Lake Community Council numerous times. With input from those factions, we went back to the drawing board to implement as much of that input as we possibly could. The result was, from our original plans, we lowered the density by ten percent. We deleted the three and four tex, fourplex style buildings, limiting our project to single-family and duplex homes. We widened the street to a public-sized street in accordance with the rest of the streets in West Park, to provide for legal on-street parking. We separated the sidewalks from the street curb to provide for two things, pedestrian safety and snow storage. We extended our trails, one to connect to the Sand Lake Road, and one to connect to Track Two, uh, in, in West Park. And finally, we provided for enhanced landscaping. I would like to thank muni leadership and staff for a sincere effort and a constructive effort to bring this project to fruition. I would especially like to thank Al Barrett and Angela. I now have a much higher respect for the challenges of their jobs. Finally, I would like to thank many of the legislature, the local neighborhood, and community members for their input. I'd like to turn it over to Trevor at this time.
There have been many changes to the West Park development plan since it was approved in, in two thousand and two. The original plan was approved for eight hundred and thirty units, which consisted of single-family and condominium duplexes. After the approval of the original plan, Anchorage School District purchased over fifty acres of the West Park development to be used for a future middle school and elementary school. Track Ten, the pond track, was later purchased by the municipality to protect the pond area, and will be left undeveloped and be used for park and community open space. Track Seven, the Lucy Pit, which is currently being filled by Anchorage sand and gravel, will not be developed for residential homes as originally planned and approved, but will be made a municipal park for the community's use. Overall, these changes reduced the approved density of West Park to five hundred and eighty-three units. Upon approval of our planned unit development, it will increase the density of West Park to six hundred and eighty-six units. This is one hundred and forty-four units less than what was approved in two thousand and two. The West Park development was designed and constructed to support the eight hundred and thirty units. Our development will not exceed the, exceed the capacities of the current public infrastructure systems, as Al pointed out. This has been proven by engineers, and the engineers of the utility companies. To wrap up on zoning, West Park consists of both R1A and R2A zoning, which allows for both single-family and duplex-style homes. There have been many concerns raised about the environmental impacts of our project. We certainly do not want to impact the environment, and we feel like all of the concerns have been addressed. Our site is in a basin, and there's no surface drainage off the site. It is practically impossible for us to pollute the pond to the west from surface runoff due to topographical constraints of the property. The water table is approximately thirty feet below the surface of the property. Our deepest utilities are between ten and twelve feet from the surface, which leaves eighteen to twenty feet of separation for protection. Additionally, a majority of the utilities are already installed, which reduces the risk. Six inches of topsoil has been spread across the site, and will, and will be maintained through the development phase and after the project is complete. The stormwater pollution prevention plan will be incorporated, and at the completion of our project, our development will have less dogs, no sheds, no RVs stored on-site, and more naturally-vegetated landscaping than any other development phase, and less park, which equates to less environmental risk and less potentials for problems.
Okay, we'll have questions. Mr. Frederick?
Thank you, through the chair, Mr. Ed, or Mr. Peterson, one or the other can answer this. I understand that the, the streets in the project will be city streets and will be maintained by the city, that's correct?
That's correct, they'll be municipal right-ofways.
How about the sidewalks, who's going to maintain the sidewalk?
Uh, the sidewalks as well are within the municipal right-ofway.
Okay.
The trails, we have an extensive trail corridor through the middle of the development that will be maintained by the homeowners association.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Pease?
Yeah, sorry for a very basic question, but, um, since this is a basin, where does the storm sewage go? Does it go under the road and out to the inlet, or where does it go?
Commissioner Pease, Al had addressed that briefly, but to the south, at the southeast corner, there's a storm sewer, and that sewer pipe runs underneath Diamond and out into the inlet.
Okay, and, um, is there any sedimentation, maybe, I'm sorry, I was, maybe I missed it in the discussion, but filtration or anything additional?
I think I would like to defer that question to Dave Grenier.
Through the chair, Ms. Pease, yes, there is. The system consists of a twenty-four-inch storm drain pipe that goes from the south, southeast corner of the project, and through, underneath Diamond, out to the inlet, and at the inlet, there is a, a, what we call a diffusion, diffusion pipe, and also a sedimentation basin. In addition to that, on-site, the manholes that are installed have, have capability of, of collecting this sediment.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Pruse?
Thank you, a few questions. One on the, on the storm drain, I see you have snow storage areas. Is there any drainage, is there a storm sewer inlet at each one of those locations? Is the first, or what does, what does the snow do when it melts?
Through, Mr. Pruse, yes, there'll be an inlet, very similar to what is in existing West Park now. We've got inlets off to open space areas that collect surface water, it settles out, and, so in the snow storage area, we are, we are planning to extend the storm drain, put in a beehive type of, of structure with a, with a catch basin. And it'll be landscaped and settling basin area.
On the, I noticed that you've got some dwellings right next to the substation, the lift station, I guess, the sewer lift station. Is there, is there a noise issue with that lift station, and is there a mitigation plan should it fail or overflow that, for the, the, the community homes that are close to that?
The sanitary sewer lift station was installed a number of years ago, I believe in oh-five, oh-four, oh-five, and to AWW standards, it includes, uh, includes multiple pumps, a, a large storage area as far as storage, it is, I believe, thirty-six hours of storage is built into it. There is duplicate pumps, backup systems, it's tied to a SCADA system, which is the state-of-the-art system that AWW has put in. The alarms are tied back to their central office, and so there's a number of backup systems, and this is, has been built to their standards, which has all of their, their safety requirements in it. It is now being maintained, and has been maintained and accepted by AWW for a number of years.
So that, so that there is a thirty-six-hour reserve capacity in case of failure, that's?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for the petitioner? Okay, so you've got two minutes for rebuttal? Okay, I'm sorry, here, Mr. Wilson?
I had a question about airport noise. What do you think would be the best way to address the concerns that, in some of the materials, some of the comments we've received from staff and, and others? How do we protect the, the next buyer when, when it's resold?
I'll answer that question.
By informing, obviously, how do we inform them?
Right, I, I believe Al indicated that current building standards would generally comply, and build to STC rating that exceeds what's required in that area as, as projected by the airport. You know, the, always the issue is, is it's, it's all good until you open a window anyway, and, and then all your STC format goes out, out the window. But there's a number of things that a, that a builder can do to improve the, the sound transmission in a, in a building, and it's, it's like an energy rating, there's, it's menu-driven, how, how high do you want to go? The fact of the matter is, is the STC rating that we intend to build to, will meet the, exceed the standard, and to go above that is, could get complicated and, and could be expensive. So it would be difficult to, to have us reach for that in this particular project, particularly since the surrounding neighborhood, neighborhoods are, are built to typical standards. particularly since the surrounding neighborhoods are built to typical standards.
I noticed that the STC 55 is going to, was suggested to be required in any adjacent buildings, the common walls. Is it also going to be applied throughout?
The common wall has a higher STC rating than an exterior wall because it's a double wall with several different sorts of components. To be honest, we are not positive with the exterior wall STC rating other than I've been assured by architects that we spoke to about the manner that we would comply with the building assembly that we're currently using.
Other than redesigning your walls and windows, what other ways can we protect the future buyers by giving them information when they are seeking to buy? Is a plat note one of the ways?
Well, that's one of the ways. In this particular project, there's a master association. I believe that it's addressed in the master association documents. And then we'll have our own homeowners' association, and we'll address it again in our documents. So a buyer buying out there will have numerous opportunities. The plat, the master association documents, the Solera homeowners' association documents, to be apprised of that. And obviously, as a seller, we're going to point that out verbally. Our agents will be instructed, on a resale basis, we're going to have to catch it in the documents. But there's three ways to do it. It should, anybody prudent or has a prudent realtor should be able to find that.
So it will be on the plat notes then?
I believe so. Is that correct, Tony? Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Yashimura?
Thank you. Through the chair. Can I call you Bob?
Yeah, okay.
I have some concerns about the buffering between the single-family homes on Big Bend and the, I think is the second phase of your development. Do you have some constraints for the road location as it is currently?
Yes, the road that you see there is aligned with the road that's currently approved. And our track was at the southern end of the development. All the utilities from the other six tracks run down and connect to the south to the storm sewer system, to the water connection, to the sewer lift station. So those utilities, those deep utilities currently exist in that corridor. So our road alignment had to fall over those existing utilities.
Could you discuss your site plan a little bit about single-family versus duplexes backing up to the single-family on Big Bend? Could you talk a little bit about what would be, I guess, the owner-installed fence versus a developer-installed fence?
I'd be happy to. What, where shall we start? First of all, if you talk about Big Bend and the homes that are there, if you go and look from track one, you'll find a myriad of homes, generally not spaced much further apart than our homes would be spaced. Because in that zoning, R1A zoning, you can build a home up to five foot from the property line. But you'll find a myriad of detached single-family garages, sheds. You'll find at least a dozen different sorts of fences, different ways of retaining their backyard. Because as Trevor mentioned, we're in a basin. We're a bit of a, call it a baby basin on our parcel. Our yards are about 30 to 40 foot deep. If a homeowner would choose to build a fence, what we've learned in the past is that the developer has to, in order to get a fence line that's straight and to get a consistent fence, the developer has to designate that fence location and also the construction style. We have a seven-page construction specifications for the construction of a fence. What happens in our projects is if a homeowner wants to build a fence, they're instructed to make application for fence approval to the homeowners' association manager. That manager would then contact the Peterson Group, and we would give out, and we would talk to the homeowner, let them know they need to build a specific fence in a specific area. They're going to have to bring a surveyor out and stake that fence where it shows on our, actually on our recorded plat. This is the only way that we've been able to, in a condominium environment or any single-family environment, get these fences to look good, be straight, not interrupt the pedestals, the electrical pedestals that people are trying to build around. So what we've done is we've designated basically 20-foot backyards behind these homes. And generally, a homeowner will end up with a fence. That will be our fencing yard. It will be about 600 square feet, or 20 foot by 30 foot. That gives them enough rooms if they have small children or pets. They can have a fencing yard. When a homeowner in one of our projects fences a yard like that, they then become responsible for maintaining that area within the fence, which the rest of the grounds are commonly owned as a common element because it's a condominium project and are maintained by the homeowners' association. As far as buffering goes, due to the fact that we are in a basin, it would be very, I kind of wonder who should be buffering from who. They're going to be looking at a very nice conforming project, a nice massing, spacing very similar to theirs, colors chosen by the developer, muted colors. No sheds, no retaining walls, nothing that the normal homeowner can just decide to do. So I think it'll be a very pleasant environment when looking from track two to track one.
I just got one comment through the chair to Commissioner Yashimura. We spent a significant amount of time looking at the massing of the single-family homes on Big Bend and matching the massing with the duplexes that we've proposed along that property line.
Thank you.
Mr. Prues?
Yeah, a couple of quick things. With the petitioner, I've got a, with Mr. Barrett over there on the noise, they ask you that, on the condition of their recommendation, the applicant shall investigate building construction techniques to mitigate and reduce airport noise impacts to interior noise levels in the homes. Could you tell me if I added, if we added the addition, the applicant shall investigate and implement standard industry building construction, would that have an adverse effect on your plan? I heard you say that you were going to investigate that anyway and try to mitigate as much as you could. I think using implement and standard industry practices would kind of put that to writing. I'm curious on your thoughts on that.
Commissioner Prues, I certainly understand. When we read that, we realized that it was vague too. And, but knowing that, you know, that we've already meeting the standards out there, it didn't disturb us. I mean, certainly, we can investigate. We're always interested in knowing if someone chose to, you know, even in a condominium environment, if someone asked us to do something, we could do that on their particular home if they felt they were going to be sensitive to it. The way that you worded it, I don't think that would affect the way we would build it. We would build it the way we still planned on. I don't think that would change that. But it might firm up that vagueness that you're seeing there.
Yeah, they give you a rating for between, you know, they give you something to get between the houses, but nothing from the exterior of the houses. I don't know if there is such a thing. I appreciate your response to that. And then, just one other question. What does, what difference does it, economic difference does it make between a one-hour firewall between condominiums versus, say, a two-hour?
It's, there is definitely economic difference. But generally, you could achieve that with layers of drywall. So it might be just a layer on each side, an additional layer. And you may have that, you have that oftentimes in higher multifamily buildings where they're requiring a higher fire rating in between the units. You know, we've done about 1,100 condominium units in town now. Never had a fire to test it.
Are they all with one-hour firewalls? Is that what you mentioned?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Prues?
Yes, two quick questions. Could you repeat for me the figure that you stated would be open space and whether that's vegetated open space or whether that includes hardscape such as sidewalks?
I think, Commissioner Pease, can we defer this question to Tony Hoffman?
Sure, and I was going to also ask if you had calculated how that compared with the other parts of West Park?
Okay.
Commissioner Pease, through the board. The code compliance calculation, now, we went round and round a little bit with planning about this, but if you read on the open space calculation sheet, the open space, the way it's defined, and if you read these definitions that I've put on here, these are exactly off the code. So what it means basically is, you know, 20%, okay, at least 30% of the site must be usable open space. Of that 30%, at least one-half of all that 30% must have a slope of less than 20%. So that's why you see the different hashed areas. A hashed area is a 20% slope. But that's still, you can still include that in the open space number, but it can't exceed 50%. That's right out of the code. And the way Mr. Barrett is interpreting it, you get to the same place. It's just a little different. But the way I calculate it is directly out of the code. We utilize this slope definition and how it ties into usable open space on hillside projects and other places where we had to come up with a usable open space. And of the usable open space, 15%, at least 15% must be, 12% must be utilized for the private open space. So that's why we show those areas inside the fences. Those are what we call private open space. That, this map is meant to show that we meet the intent of the open space code or definition of 2150, or 35, excuse me. So, and 2150, there's two sections of code that deal with open space. Did that answer your question? It's a real...
That's okay. Maybe my question wasn't quite clear. I wasn't actually looking for the usable open space. I was looking for the hardscape and therefore the amount of permeability on this site versus the typical, the other parts of West Park.
Oh, how we compare?
Yeah, and I thought I heard something about 45%, but maybe I didn't write the number down, so I was...
I don't think we quoted a total permeable number.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for the petitioner? Okay, you have reserved two minutes, I believe?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're going to take about a five-minute break before we start taking comments from the public because I've had too much water. So we'll take a five-minute break. We'll be right back. I'm going to call the meeting back to order. Mr. Hoffman, I believe you've got some additional information to answer Ms. Pease's question.
Through the chair, excuse me, Ms. Pease. I did find, and I know there was so much information in these packages, and the original application we did with 239 units, we actually did do an impervious coverage comparison to the zoning if the property was on, was developed as R1. Now, this, of course, our building count has dropped approximately 5% to 6%. So, you know, the number's going to be a little less now. But with 239 units, and this was in the original application we did in 1214, we, you know, where we had 239 units, we had a, it was about, it was an eight, nine-page narrative with all the original application data. Now, on page three of that, we went into, we were actually, there was a zoning density comparison that we did. And the idea was that we were going to, we wanted to look at the building footprint of this type of development and compare it to the R1A building size of West Park in general. As you know, those are large, nice buildings. And the type of development we have is not that type of building footprint. And if you read through it, what we found out was the likely footprint of an R1A subdivision, 113 lots, as approved right now in our basin, would be approximately 259, 260,000 square feet. And at the time, with all buildings that we had with 239 units, we came up with about 319,000 square feet, which was a... The difference was, you know, you're looking at 50,000 square feet difference, which translates to about 15%, 15%. So the increase in density doesn't necessarily follow along in the increase of footprint, in this case. And it's kind of an intuitive thing when you look at the size of the large R1A houses. And, you know, we're using a typical footprint of 23,000, 2300 square foot per building of an R1A. And ours are smaller. Does that make sense?
Yes, so I think I understand it right. Your layout produced about a 15% more hardscape, but then you took 6% of the units out.
Out, right.
So it's less than 15% more hardscape.
Yes, and we didn't update that number. But that was, we were just trying to kind of see the comparison. Because when you look at it, it looks like a lot. But when you start looking at the large footprints that have been developed through the West Park development and, you know, are predominant in single lot, large lots, and you look at what you get with these, it's not, you know, 113 lots as opposed to 239 units, it's not twice as much by any means.
Okay, thanks. I was trying to see what density means in terms of footprint, that helps.
And there's a lot of good stuff in this first application that didn't get revised and carried through because we figured it was in the original application.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Okay, we'll go ahead and start taking public testimony now. Just some advice, grab that mic and get it down close to your lips when you're talking into it so we can hear you. Please state your name for the record. And if you have an unusual last name that we may misspell, please spell your name. You know, the Smiths and the Joneses don't have to spell their names, but those people that are skis and stuff on the end, we probably need to have you spell those. So, and what I'd like to do is move this rather quickly because we do have a lot of people, and I want to make sure that everybody gets to testify before we start getting a thousand-mile stare in our eyes up here. And if you do have something that has been said by a person previously to you, don't be afraid to say, "I agree with that person, and here's the things that are in addition to," so we can move a little bit more quickly. So, first person, whoever would like to talk.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Steve Gervell, G-E-R-V-E-L. I am vice-chair of the Sand Lake Community Council.
Be fine, you've got five minutes.
The president is involved in our council, our regular council meeting this evening, so he was not able to be here. But I will be here to take any questions regarding the resolution that was put forth on March 14th meeting. At this meeting, there were numerous residents from the West Park area that were very upset about the density increase. And looking through the packet that was provided in the staff report from planning, everything is above board in what the developer wants to do. But I think what the people in the area were upset about is they were unaware that this kind of item exists within the municipality. That may be the responsibility of the realtor that they dealt with, to inform them. I myself went to find planned unit development since this is the first time it's occurred in our council area. So it took me about 30 minutes to... So, it took me about 30 minutes to get through the many levels of the Muni website to find this, and it does bring it out clearly. I think this is something that normal people that are laypersons will never find, or maybe not even ask the Realtor about. So, I think this is one of the issues that's going to be foremost on the minds of a lot of the community members here this evening.
Anything else, sir?
No, I'll be standing by to take any questions.
Okay, fine, any questions, let's see, Ms. Yoshimura?
I'm not quite sure, our Treasurer may have that information. She is going to be testifying this evening.
How many people were in attendance at the meeting where this resolution was passed?
There were probably 50 to 60 people at that meeting. It was a very full room because of the issue.
Was it a unanimous decision?
Yes, I believe it was. I believe there was nobody against the resolution.
Any further questions for Mr. Gervell? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Please come forward.
My name is Barbara Penrose, P-E-N-R-O-S-E. I'm just here as a citizen. I'm a retired schoolteacher from the Anchorage School District, and I've lived at 7449 Bailey Drive for 19 years, since 1992. I hope to continue to reside there, and I came here with two concerns, but I'm leaving with three. The two I came with were traffic and water quality. I've seen traffic more than double since I've lived in the Sand Lake area. It's not a scientific report, it's just what I've seen and experienced. If you are coming onto Diamond or Sand Lake or Raspberry from a side street, you will wait. And Lord help you if school just got out, or if it's 7:30 in the morning or 5:30 in the afternoon, you will wait. It has more than doubled. There's more people, you can no longer take a walk anywhere and be alone, you are in a stream of traffic of people. And there's more litter, and there's more noise. Last New Year's Eve, it was like a war zone in Sand Lake. Most of that firecracker activity was over the pit. My second concern is water quality. And knowing that my source of water, which is a well on my property, is 20 feet away from thousands of people's sewage system, does not seem comforting to me. 20 feet does not seem like much, I'm concerned about that. My last concern arose here. Now, Ms. Yoshimura, I've known your name since I was in high school in the early '70s. You've been a fixture in the real estate community. I don't know you, but I know your name. Now, you might be the kindest, most ethical person in the world, but you are a partner to the developers. To me, that means if they're making money, you are going to make money. How can you be on the Planning and Zoning Commission? I don't feel like citizens have a chance. I've become, in the space of half an hour, a cynic about civic duty. This is my first time ever approaching a group like this. And to know that the developers have a partner on the commission makes me want to just throw up my hands and walk away and say, "It's a done deal. Why am I even here?" Well, I am here because I do have concerns, and they've grown since being here. But I hope that all of you will think that when these gentlemen walk away, having made a lot of money, we have zoned that area a single-family unit. They're asking us to sweep that aside and make it more than a single-family. To me, that just means more money. I'm not an attorney, I'm not a developer, I'm not an engineer, but twice the units means twice the money. You're going to make the money and walk away. The rest of us are going to be left there, dealing with the traffic, dealing with worry over our water, and dealing with possibly very reduced quality of life, and dealing with cynicism in my case. Thank you for hearing me.
Any questions for Ms. Penrose? Ma'am, I think we've got some questions here. Ms. Pease?
Yes, Ms. Penrose, where are you in relation to the lots? You said your well was 20 feet from the sewer system, so I'm guessing that's from pipes, but...
One of these gentlemen said they did studies on how deep the water aquifer is compared to where the people's sewage lines are going to be. And I think he quoted 12 to 13 feet down is where the sewage is, and our water source was 20 feet away from that. 20 feet, I was trying to picture that against the wall there, that is not very far. And that's all my water, I bathe in it, I drink it, I use it in my cooking. One little leak in somebody's sewage line, and what am I putting in my body? That's frightening.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Parks?
My question was...
Ma'am, please don't escape, just stay put until we let you go.
I'm sorry.
Can you tell me how deep your well is on your property?
I do not know.
So, it's certainly deeper than 20 feet.
I think this gentleman said most wells are 20 or 30.
No, no, he was talking, I believe he was referring to the city sewer and water.
Okay.
So, I would hope that you're...
I'm not on city water, I'm on well. And no, I don't know how deep it is.
I would assume that it would be much deeper than 20 feet, so that's...
Okay, well, that helps a little bit, but it still worries me.
Any further questions for Ms. Penrose? Okay, now you may sit down, thank you.
Hello, thank you for allowing public testimony, and my name is Jason Hartz, and I live at Big Bend Loop. I'd just like to present a couple thoughts, and mainly ask that the commission deny the conditional use application. I think there's a couple of points that are necessary to keep in mind when considering this application. The first being that the standard for decision is not what development has been proposed in the past, but what additional impact granting the conditional use would have over the current zoning. And the current zoning is for 113 single-family homes, or that's what's currently platted. And then, the proposal has been for 200 and some units, which is, of course, not double the impact, but certainly has a greater impact. And so, I think it's just important to keep in mind that even the West Park might have been proposed for 800 units. At some point, currently, it's 500 or 600. And though the conditional use provisions in the code might allow for something like this, and technically not be considered a rezone, it certainly does look like a rezone, and something that seems like it should be going before the Assembly to get vetted more thoroughly by our elected representatives, all due respect to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And just the last quick statement I'd like to make is that my wife and I just recently bought our homes in West Park, and one of the things that really stood out in the neighborhood was the consistent zoning and housing types in the area. And that was really attractive and very, very difficult to find anywhere else in Anchorage in a price range that we could afford. And so, it would, I think it would really take away from one of the big selling points of the area to have the different housing types and kind of make it more like the hodgepodge that other parts of Anchorage are. So, thank you very much for considering my testimony. I'll answer any questions, although I don't know that I have much to, much more to contribute.
Any questions for Ms. Yoshimura?
Thank you, where on Big Bend do you live?
On 5916, it's the north half of the street, so other side of the street from the proposed development.
And how many lots in?
10 or so from West Park, I'm not really sure.
Were you aware that part of the property in West Park, were you aware at the time you purchased that part of the property in West Park was zoned R2A?
Um, well...
Large lot, single fam, uh, large lot duplex, sorry.
There were disclosures in the resale certificate, I believe, as to a certain amount of duplexes being proposed for the area. And so, I do know that when we bought, there were certain statements made about that in the resale certificate and some of the other documents. But those documents also stated that the developer or others had been planning, I believe, approximately 2,000 homes for the area, but that to accomplish that density would require seeking certain zoning approvals from, I don't know if they specifically named the Planning and Zoning Commission, but they did name other entities from which approval would be required in order to get to that density. So, it was made very clear in those documents that while the developer had certain ideas on how dense they wanted to make the area, that that was not currently approved, so...
Mr. Prouse?
Yeah. Have you had a chance to go look at Discovery Park in Southport?
Uh, no, I have not.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Hartz? Thank you, sir.
Good evening, my name is Linda Swiss, Swiss like Swiss cheese. And I've lived at 6920 Kithlinsen Drive, which is off of Raspberry on the backside of the airport, for about four years. We get our water from a well on our property, and I'm very concerned about the proposed development and the effects on the water table in that area. I'm sure you're going to hear that from a lot of people tonight. I'm also concerned about the stormwater drainage and the sewer systems that were designed for the single-family homes in that area. And any increased capacity should require further analysis for their impact, for its impact. I'm also concerned about the traffic studies on, especially with, in relation to the increased or the potentially increased development of the airport. I believe the airport master plan is funded for, to be redone in 2012. And, you know, I know that there had been a traffic study that had been conducted, but I don't believe it was finalized. And I have to agree with Barb Penrose, I'm a little concerned about the appearance of Ms. Yoshimura on this, in this group right here, making a decision with her business partner. It does not appear to be, you know, it appears to be a conflict of interest to the citizens. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Swiss? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
My name is Florrie Vincent, I've lived at 7433 Bailey Drive for the last 30 years. And I just have a couple of questions. On page 17, there's reference to a traffic analysis that was done. When? And how does the public access that? And also on page 17, it indicates that "This proposed development will not have a permanent negative impact on the items listed below substantially greater than that anticipated from permitted development. A pedestrian and vehicular traffic circulation and safety." I'm a former University of Alaska professor, and that sounds like really good doublespeak to me. So, when was the traffic analysis done, and how does the public access it? Second question, also on page 17. "I'm concerned about noise, air, water, and other forms of environmental pollution. I'm concerned about what about the pollution of the aquifers, either during construction or after." And if you can answer those questions, the aquifers and the traffic analysis, I'd really appreciate it. I also have two sealed envelopes that have comments from people in our subdivision. One is from Pete and Francis Rayner at 5132 West 72nd. The other one is Mr. and Mrs. Zigmund Kolowski at 7241 Bailey Drive. And I'd like to submit this to the chairperson, please.
Please bring it forward, we will accept that. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, are there any questions for Ms. Vincent? Yes, Ms. Yoshimura?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Since you're the second person to testify, is it Bailey Drive or Bailey?
Bailey, B is in boy, A-I-L-E-Y drive.
How large are your lots?
They're fairly large size, it's like, I would say, close to a half acre.
So, maybe like 20,000 square feet?
Probably, yes, I think that's fair to say.
And you're on well and septic system?
We're on city sewer, but our private wells.
And how far away is public water from your subdivision?
Public water is on the backside of ours and the development back there, the subdivision back there. That's, public water is there.
And do you have the choice whether or not to hook up to public water?
We have not had a choice.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for Ms. Vincent? Okay, ma'am, if you'd, let me see if I can get an answer for you. Mr. Barrett, can you answer the question on about that traffic analysis? That was, that's come up more than once already.
Mr. Chairman, the traffic study goes back to the early 2000s, and to get a copy, you'd have to go to the Traffic Department. Something with that time period would no longer be available online. But I should also point out again that the Traffic Department did look at that study again, and did look at the development on-site in that general area and what is proposed by this application, and deemed that no changes were necessary.
And when was that, if I might interrupt? When did they look at it again?
About two months ago.
And is that report available to the public?
It would be, you'd have to check with the Traffic Department, ma'am, yes.
Who would I see in the Traffic Department?
John Kreps is the director. The two gentlemen who did the actual review are Lee Coop, C-O-O-P, and Dwayne Ferguson.
And their conclusions were the same as that done 11 years ago?
That the addition of this amount of traffic did not generate any new concerns or needs for improvements.
Thank you. How about the pollution of the aquifers?
The pollution of the aquifers, one, is a settled issue, it's been to court and is gone. Two, in order to bring the issue up again for discussion, I think you would have to demonstrate conclusively how this specific project has the potential to pollute the aquifers. And I'm not talking about catastrophic things like a rupture in a sewer line that could happen anywhere in town, anywhere in Alaska for that matter. This type of development with Muni water and sewer, smaller private yards, is going to have less impact on groundwater than a comparable development that could be put in there on septic systems all over again, if they chose not to do water and sewer.
What about pollution of the aquifer during construction?
The types of waste generated during construction are actually fairly minimal. We talked about that as recently as today, with some of our groundwater people, for some of the more dangerous chemicals and elements, arsenic, asbestos, things like that. The chances are extremely remote, and they would happen with any type of construction to go on in there. Mr. Peterson could have come in, built 113 homes without going through any type of public review.
I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that there was a problem during the original construction of West Park back in the day, that that had polluted people's wells. Not only polluted them, but they had a less capacity to draw water. And I believe that there's a study attached to your handout right in here.
There's been much discussion over the years about whether or not the aquifers are even interconnected, where the wells are. It's been studied, it's been studied, and it's been put to bed.
By the developer, thank you, Mr....
Just, Mr. Barrett, just one question that you brought up there. You mentioned that the aquifer thing had been settled in court, educate me on that, please.
Mr. Chairman, can I recall the entire history? I think there are probably others in the audience. As part of all the developments that have been going on, even when the conditional use for the lift station was being reviewed, there were issues about the existing wells, the existing septic tanks that are on the property surrounding this. What are the various aquifers underneath the ground? Are they interconnected? How much is, or how great is the depth to the first aquifer? How much is, or how great is the depth to the first aquifer? The evidence has not been conclusively shown that they are interconnected. There were appeals of various findings, they ended up in court, and I guess, just to keep it short, it was all dismissed in the end.
Okay, so, so in other words, it, it, it was dismissed, basically, or it was found that there was no problem with the aquifers? I'm asking.
Was the court ruling that specific? There, there were filing deadlines that were missed, there were appeal deadlines that were missed, but the evidence to connect the aquifers to each other and to wells in the material, in the technical materials that were submitted were not clearly shown to be there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have handouts that I would like to deliver as soon as I finish. My name is Deanna Essert, I live at 6262 West Diamond. I spell my name like dessert without a D, E-S-S-E-R-T. I am treasurer of the Sand Lake Community Council, and introduced and supported the resolution passed on March the 24th, 2011. The resolution opposes any change in density, whether through the conditional use or through a change in zoning. The Sand Lake Community Council was promised that Kincaid Estates would be developed as single-family homes, and the original plans back in 2004 show single-family homes. Without those plans and promises, the community would not have supported the hope with subdivision. This community does not support a conditional use or a change in zoning that allows duplexes in an R1A zone. The southeast corner of the Kincaid Estates property has the potential for negatively impacting the aquifers because it is approximately thirty feet above the shallow water table. In your packet are numerous complaints about how the grading impacted water wells from areas east, west, and south of Kincaid Estates. However, the developer, at the March twenty, at the March meeting, refused to invest any investment dollars, any development dollars, in a monitoring well to monitor water quality. There are numerous references in the historical information, pages 135 to 160, verifying the need for monitoring wells, and for the developer to take every means possible to protect the surrounding neighbor's water source. I refer you to one, the November the 30th, 2004 letter from Dan Sullivan to Mayor Begich, number two, the November 20th, 2004 letter from Representative Norm Wolfberg to the ADEC, and number three, the January the 27th letter from Sand Lake Community Council President Dan Burgess to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Nowhere in the packet is there a copy of the study completed by the University of Alaska Anchorage entitled "Review of Geologic and Hydrogeologic Studies Related to the Proposed Kincaid Estates Subdivision." That study was authored by highly qualified PhD Leanne Monk and two of her associates. Nowhere in the packet is there a copy of the Sand Lake Groundwater Geochemistry and Aquifer Connectivity Report dated January 2010, prepared by Leanne Monk. All these reports refute the conclusion of the 2003 ADEC report that the aquifers are separated by confining layers, and strongly supports the need for monitoring wells to trace the flow of pollutants into the deeper aquifers. The information in the UAA report also refuses-
Please summarize.
The TERRSAT reports that alleged confining layers will prevent pollutants from reaching the groundwater. The reports are too technical for me to go into detail, but I wish that you would read them before you discount a monitoring well. I have them here. One is over a hundred pages, the other one is much shorter. I'd like to give them to whoever's interested.
Fine, we'll take those as information that's provided. Thank you. Okay, very good. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, Ms., there's, Ms. Pease has a question?
Yes, this question relates to Ms. Essert's comment on monitoring wells, but it might be for Mr. Barrett to answer. Were monitoring wells installed for the Lucy pit filling, fill, and has any data been produced from those that would be relevant to the interconnectivity of wells and aquifers? I know that that's on the other side of West Park, but-
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Pease, yes, I'd refer that to a hydrogeologist if there's one in the office, but I believe that this project is well down gradient from the Lucy pit area. Yes, there is a requirement for wells, but all of that has happened within about the last six or seven months, so there's no data.
And to follow up, is there data from any wells in any other parts of this kind of aquifer system? Because I know there's been fill on the opposite side of Sand Lake. Has there been any additional evidence since 2004 from monitoring wells?
Not that I have seen, although I do know that there are wells that have been put in, and I know that there are individual homeowners who have made private agreements with some engineering firms who are interested in that kind of data also, but I've not seen anything.
Okay, thank you. I guess I would follow-up question to Ms. Essert. Is there any location or protocol for monitoring wells that you're asking for?
There are two monitoring wells that were dug and have been monitored at least one time. Money came from the state legislature through the, I'm trying to think of what the name of it is. It's a, it's a Water Coalition, non-government agency here in Anchorage. There has been no money from the municipality of Anchorage, as far as I know. They have monitored the pond for nitrates and for volatile chemical, chemicals, and those reports have been filed, but there have been no monitoring wells that have filed reports on this property.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Ms. Essert?
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. President, board members, I'm not a public speaker, so I'll read my statements and give you a coffee, if I can. My name is Dick Boyson, I live at 5138 Strawberry Road. And please let me first state, while I was unable to attend the Sand Lake Community Council meeting on March 14th, 2011, I support the unanimously passed Resolution 2011-026, which I believe you now have copies. I have even more compelling reasons for denying not only the request for zoning change, which I guess technically it's not a zoning change, but also the request for Plot S-11867. Track B in particular lies over a series of sediment ponds that have not yet shown to be adequate, i.e., they have shown to be inadequate structurally during extreme runoff periods. Additionally, existing adjacent homeowners purchased their new homes with anticipation that their neighbors would have similar homes, as the original zoning was R1A. A condo development would not be consistent with these anticipations. Please deny this proposed zoning change as submitted. I know, probably, in addition to the latter, I should say that I was construction manager for the school district for, for thirteen years. Started out as a contractor and had practiced engineering in the Anchorage area, and particularly in, I was, I had probably more information about the pit developments negatively and positively since 1967, since I first was involved there. So, as an engineer and contractor. So, I think it's important to, to listen to the homeowners and to look at the current philosophy for designing storm drain systems, which includes on-site treatment before any sediment, any effluent is allowed to leave the site, which would be the culvert underneath the Diamond Boulevard. As, as set up now, these sediment basins are, are temporary, but they're poorly constructed, have sandy materials, so that they're not structurally stable, and, and so when there's any extreme runoff event, they erode. And so I think that issue needs to be addressed before any kind of, of, of development is done in there, so that we know that the, that the storm drain is treated before it leaves the site. And I'd be willing to ask and answer any questions that you might have of me.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Boyson? I've got a comment from Mr. Barrett here over on staff. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I believe I heard the word effluent used in there, and I just wanted to get the context for that again. The drain that goes under Diamond is for excess stormwater runoff that cannot be handled on-site, but actual sewage wastewater goes into the muni system immediately.
Well, I'm, I'm not talking about sanitary, I'm talking about stormwater. And effluent would be what would be the runoff from any sedimentation system on-site, whether it be plants or sediment basins. And it used to be that a series of sedimentation was determined to be the best way to treat stormwater, but now the new philosophy, which notably comes from the South Forty-Eight, and not, not all applicable to Alaska or Anchorage specifically, that, that larger sedimentation basins are more effective than, than a series of small ones. And another issue relative to snow storage, I run through the gravel pit, helped extract probably a good percentage of the gravel out of there, but I run through it about three to four times every, every day, when it's possible to do it during the year, or not a day, but per week, and about 1,200 miles last year through there. And the five feet of snow, the snow storage is not adequate, even with the sidewalk, because during the winter, those are both totally covered with snow, and, and a good portion of the driving ways is to the extent where you can't run in the wintertime. So, I, I wouldn't count on the 10-foot for snow storage on any subdivision.
Okay, Ms. Pease has a question?
Yes, so you mentioned the, that some of the sediment ponds had failed, and I think you mentioned a certain tract, and I just wondered where the locations of those were, and whether Mr. Barrett had any-
The line under what was proposed is Track B, and then, and the new proposal, and new subdivision should be the most southerly portion, and, and adjacent to West Park Drive and north of Diamond Boulevard. There's several in that line, and, and in the preliminary plan for Track B, they retain, appeared to retain one of the sediment basins, but that would be inadequate, as it appears for the drains that I've seen since they opened it up.
So if I understand, you've seen them wash out?
Yes.
Okay, and Mr. Barrett is in another conversation, but maybe we could get his-
Not only have they washed out, but there's been times when, in order to get rid of the, the stormwaters, had to go over West Park Drive, and, and ultimately has eroded the slope on the east side of West Park Drive going down into the exposed aquifer.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Boyson?
Thank you, sir.
Could we get Mr. Barrett to respond to that?
Yes.
Mr. Barrett?
Thank you, sir. Sorry, Mr. Chairman, just getting a little late information regarding surface water drainage. What was the question?
Mr. Nick, didn't catch his last name, testified that sediment basins for Track B have eroded and overflowed across West Park Drive, and I wondered if the muni is aware of problems with other sediment basins, and whether this affects the credibility of the drainage calculations for this unit.
Calling while Mr. Kiefer comes up here. I'm not exactly certain where Track B is. Kincaid Park is tracks one through 10.
Well, there's, there's a preliminary plan in, in process that is described as S-11887, and within that, that's, that's, that's a section that's right to directly east of West Park Drive, and just to the north of, of Diamond Boulevard, and at the bottom of the slope, and, and it shows new homes over the top of those existing sedimentation basins.
I don't have any information on that particular tract, Mr. Chairman.
Well, it's part of three, three different tracks that this, this subdivision entails.
Okay, we're not dealing with zoning tonight on this particular thing, we're dealing with a conditional use, so.
Well, yeah, I think it's a misnomer, I think everybody from the Sand Lake area deals, thinks of it as a zoning issue, it's a misuse of words, maybe. It's in, it's, that's, that's a word that's used in the community packet, the community council packet, and, and that's one I've passed on, which is probably incorrect.
Well, again, this, this evening, you were just dealing with the conditional use portion of this.
Yeah.
So, and then, Ms. Yoush Mira, you've got a question for Mr. Boyson?
I do. Mr. Boyson, due to your familiarity with the pit, were you aware that there was a significant portion of this area that was zoned R2A?
I knew that it was, that it was anticipated, but I know that the, in, in watching the development, that the people have moved in there with the idea that their, that their neighbors would be single-family homes.
But you were aware then, that, that this area was not just limited through zoning to single-family, but that there was an R2A zone, which did allow large lots duplexes?
Yeah, large lots, but that's, that's, that's not what this is proposing, it's not large lots.
Thank you.
Mr. Barrett?
Mr. Chairman, just to stall a few minutes while Mr. Kiefer gathers his thoughts. I think two or three times now I've heard the R2A district refers to, referred to as large lots. R2As are six and seven thousand square feet. I mean, large lot to me means an acre and a quarter. Okay, thank you.
Well, and I think that, that you're not the only one, that, that should know.
Okay, the fact of the was, it was, I believe, rezoned a number of years ago to, to R2A, so, okay. Any further questions for Mr. Boyson?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Bruce Wagner, I live on Big Bend Loop. Moved there recently to move out of my condominium and a neighborhood with lots of traffic noise, and rows and rows of these double-family housing units. I moved to, to West Park to get away from the noise. Maybe it's a little farther drive to get to most other places in Anchorage, but I was told there would be single-family units only, and I like the variety of style. I don't like the Discovery Park, the houses may be nice, but they're cookie cutters by and large. And it seems to me, in coming to the meeting, I agree with that lady, it almost seems like this is an effort in futility from what has gone on so far. I get the feeling it's sort of a done deal, and we're just, we're going through the motions here of citizen input. And, and that concerns me. I, I would have hoped that citizen input, and I've read dozens and upon dozens upon dozens of letters, and all of them were opposed to this development as it is. And it seems like it's just a foregone conclusion that it's going to happen, and, and now that we're, now we're taking the testimony on it. But anyway, I, I moved there to get away from a lot of the congestion where I live, to get away from all the noise and all that, and it seems to me that the people living in that area should, should have a priority as to what goes on in that neighborhood. And so, the water concerns, I can remember ten, twelve years ago in rural Alaska, seeing the newspaper articles about the Sand Lake development and the concerns about the water. And it sounds to me like those still aren't, aren't fully settled, and so to, to change something, to make more development in that area, seems like that's the last thing you should be doing, only if it was going to enhance the area. Not something that just because the developer wants to make more money that we go along with it, but rather that we consider, are concerned about the people who live there, why they like that neighborhood and that area of town. I, I too agree that someone who is associated with the Peterson Group- I too agree that someone who is associated with the Peterson Group really shouldn't have any input on this decision. Seems to me like a conflict of interest in agreeing with some of the other people who have spoke up. Okay, that's all.
Is there any questions for Mr. Wagner?
Thank you for your testimony, sir.
Is anybody else that wishes to testify?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. My name is Jeff Simmons, S-I-M-M-O-N-S, live at 5860 Big Bend Loop. First of all, I'd like to state that I believe Commissioner Yoshimura, sorry if I didn't pronounce that right, should recuse herself from this decision based on her relationship with the Peterson Group. I also want to inform you that when we bought our property, which was two months before the Peterson Group bought this property, we were not informed at all that any of it was zoned R2. My wife read through everything, I read through everything, and there was nothing in there to us indicating that. I believe that this should not be approved, that they should be allowed to build something that fits in with what we have now, which is single-family homes and a lower density. I also think it's important to note that while the West Park Homeowners Association supports this, that the first communication that I received as a neighbor in that community and talking to my neighbors was the letter saying that they approved that, and I later found out that they approved it after receiving a rather large donation from the Peterson Group.
Any questions for Mr. Simmons? Mr. Frederick?
Thank you. Through the chair, Mr. Simmons, to your knowledge, does the homeowners association have regular meetings that are noted to the residents of the subdivision?
I have not been informed of anything, but I...
And you've lived there now for...
Over two years.
Two years, yes, okay. Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Simmons?
You know, I do think that's one of the reasons why the Sand Lake meeting was so packed, was because that was the first chance that us neighbors, we had to speak out on this.
Did you attend the Sand Lake Community Council meeting where the resolution was?
I did not, but I know a number of my neighbors did.
Okay. Do you frequently ever attend the Sand Lake Community Council meetings?
No, but I am definitely going to be starting that.
Any further questions for Mr. Simmons?
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate your time here to speak tonight. My name is Stephen Chakowski, I live at 5889 Big Bend Loop, and my backyard will be right up against this development. I've also lived at that address since 2007, when a lot of those houses were first being occupied. One of the things I'd like to point out is that the Peterson Group said they've got a lot of input, and even stated the West Park associate, or the West Park name, it didn't include any of the homeowners in that area or the homeowners association. That time, I believe that group was actually the prior owner, the Holquist Group, another developer, not us. As somebody that works in the city of Anchorage and for the city, I see high-density housing all over town and deal with all the problems that come with that, one of those being traffic. I would welcome you to try to cross Diamond Boulevard anywhere near the Jewel Lake area or anywhere west of that, or watch the kids in the morning as they try to get from one side of the road to the other when the school buses are coming out. I know that those traffic guys didn't observe that, because I consider it a concern when I personally have seen kids almost get hit on that street. I have also stopped for kids crossing that street and had other people in the area pass me on a two-lane road across the yellow line because they're not willing to wait. I don't think that would be addressed in that traffic issue either. The other thing that goes along with that is, when they say that they can handle that area, there was 10 tracks originally in that area. We're currently down to six, as numerous ones have been bought by the school district and other things. Those traffic studies don't include the impact that that's going to have for that school area, to include a junior high and an elementary school. Diamond was supposed to be improved out past the West Park development, it has not. Diamond has no gutters on that main drive, the drainage is poor in wintertime at best, and is actually sometimes, based on the weather, becomes a one-lane road where you have to get very close to other oncoming traffic in the area. When you take that into consideration with the fact that you want to take 113 homes, the average home has two people with cars in it, and take that to 216, I don't understand how we get the number from Mr. Peterson that we're only going to increase the amount of traffic by 20% for that track. If you base it over the whole track, that might be the case, but that's not the issue, it's this one track. It's doubling the amount of people in the area. The footprint, I agree, might not be varied that much between the 113 and the 216 homes. But once you take those numbers in to what's going on up on the main road to try to get in and out of that area, it's very difficult. It's also not a straight road, it's also not graded straight, and it's not flat. Where West Park comes onto Diamond, there's a blind spot during numerous times of the year, to include winter, for the western traffic that's coming out of the further area, which is at a 50 mile an hour speed limit. So if you are unfortunate enough to not get traction immediately get out on the road, you're taking a chance with the other traffic in the area. My other concerns are with the water in the area.
Please summarize, sir.
The water in the area is my other concern for all the other homeowners in the area, and I feel bad as I'm a new member of the Sand Lake Community Council and will continue to be being a new homeowner in the area.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Chakowski? Ms. Yoshimura?
Do you live on the south side of Big Bend or the north side?
I live on the south side. My lot is number 10, and I will be backed up to a duplex that was supposed to be a single-family home when I purchased my home, and actually was shown a picture of a single-family home behind my house.
Do you have any ideas about mitigating and buffering your single-family area from this proposed site plan?
My concern with the buffering is, is right now, we've had landscape put in by prior developers, and it may meet the original plan when it's put in. I want to know who's going to take care of that, as all the evergreens in West Park have died, it's sandy soil, we have numerous dead trees that the homeowners association is currently trying to replace. I was a member of that homeowners association until this became an issue, and the two board members that were on the West Park homeowners association last year that live on Big Bend, if it gives you any indication of what's going on, they resigned from the board and didn't seek another election to that board. And the people that are on that board currently don't live on Big Bend. They also did not get any input for their letter to the Peterson Group from anyone on Big Bend reference the developments that were going in our backyard, not theirs.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else wish to testify? Please come forward.
Chairman, Commissioners, I appreciate the time to testify here. My name is Matt Blotmacher, B as in Bravo, L-A-T-T-M-A-C-H-R. I currently live at 5905 Big Bend Loop, which is two houses down from Steve on the south side. When I purchased my house in September of 2008, it was never represented to me that we would have anything behind our home other than single-family homes. One of the things that I feel very strongly about is, you can see from the plans that the Peterson Group has submitted, from the numerous meetings I'm sure they've had, the amount of money and effort that has gone into this project, that it is very well worth their time to try and change this. One thing I have never heard is what's in it for the current homeowners. What's in it for me? Why, as a current homeowner, would I want this to go on? I don't see a benefit other than increased density, increased cars, increased noise. Again, one of my issues was in complete agreement with Steve Chakowski. I haven't really heard much about the proposed park that's going to go in, the proposed school, and how that's going to affect. We're basically doubling the population from what it's proposed. In addition, we're going to have schools, buses, and I'm not sure that the density or tests that have been performed have really taken that into account. And that's all I have to say. My other comment is, I have agreed that if this plan is approved to increase the homes to basically double what it was original size, I plan to put my home up for sale and move out of West Park.
Just a minute, sir. Are there any questions for Mr. Blotmacher? Ms. Pease?
Yes, Mr. Blotmacher, specifically, what is it about the duplexes that would be particularly detrimental to your street, and would it make any difference if your street didn't have the duplexes? I don't know whether the, not proposing anything yet, but if there was, the single-family homes were opposite your property, would that make a difference to you, or?
I'm not so sure that it makes a difference to me personally. It is going to come a difference when I go to sell my home or from people moving in. I know that was one of the reasons for originally purchasing my home, was that it was kind of, as other people have mentioned, very, you know, they were all kind of single-family homes, that's what I thought I was buying. I didn't move over to Discovery Park or near there, I have seen that subdivision, it's very nice, my parents live near that subdivision. I didn't move there specifically because I didn't want that, I wanted single-family homes, and there's no guarantee that when I get ready to sell my home, I won't experience a decrease in value or, you know, loss of marketability because of what's behind it, directly behind it.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any further questions for Mr. Blotmacher?
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else wish to testify?
Hi, my name is Laura Nelson, and I'm a resident of West Park for three and a half years. I live on Keneffyards Loop, and I am opposed to the Solera PED. And just to clarify, the West Park Board of Directors did not consult with the residents of West Park, and they were also offered $25,000 in landscaping money for West Park along West Park Drive. Currently, West Park has a total of 211 a lot. Of those 211 lots, 188 of the lots are zoned R1A, single-family, and the remaining 23 were zoned for 2ASL, which permits the construction of a duplex unit. Currently, an additional 31 lots are being added and are zoned the same as the existing lots, with four of those lots being zoned 2ASL. According to Greg Rumsey with White Raven Development, the position on these four lots is the same as the other R2A lots that were brought into the association to date, and that is that a duplex would not fit into the single-family streetscape. However, the board would consider a mother-in-law suite, but it would have to look like a single-family home. To date, we have not had any builders choose this option to design a house with a mother-in-law suite. West Park's design guidelines require that all structures and improvements be approved by the Architectural Review Committee. Some of those requirements is it's a minimum of a two-story home, they're also supposed to have a two-car garage. If they cannot build it at the time of the home, it can be detached as long as the parcel of land is large enough to later construct that detached garage. According also to the declaration of West Park, the intent was to create a superior residential neighborhood with a wide range of dwelling units, appearance, and colors. There are more than 10 different builders with numerous housing designs and a variety of colors that help maintain the architectural integrity and design harmony of West Park. The Peterson Group's proposal for 216 units, only 76 of those are single-family homes and 140 duplexes. Of these, there are only 12 different building types, and three of these designs only have single-car garages, they also have a design that's three stories high, which does not fit into the vision of West Park. When we were given our public offering saving when we moved into West Park, we were told it was single-family homes, there was also plans for schools and a park, and never mentioned condominiums that were going to be going in, or a large majority of duplexes, which will affect the value of our homes. The other concern I have is traffic currently. All of the other streets, if you consider the number of homes that are on the streets and accessing West Park, the most homes that you would have accessing through one point would be 56 homes. Of course, the 216 units they're proposing would all be using two access points to West Park, which...
Please summarize.
...increase in traffic, which could endanger the people coming up and down the hill, since both of their access points are on the hill.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Nelson?
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, my name is Bob Kniefel, that's K-N-I-E-F-E-L, and this is kind of fun to be on this side of the bench for a while, instead of being on your side. I want to talk tonight just about, I happen to be a resident of Discovery Park, and I'm also on the Board of Directors there for the homeowners association. I understand, and again, I've seen through many of the years I've been involved here, developments as they occur in that, and I originally built in True Gatch foothills when it was brand-new, and it was great, everything was perfect, the lots were nice, the landscaping got done, and everything stayed the same. But over the 30-some years that True Gatch foothills has been in existence, there's been a lot of changes in ownership, in quality, and things that have happened. As I look to retire from the city and then move into someplace else, I looked around and I found Discovery Park, and for me, that was an ideal situation. We have a strong homeowners association, it has very strong controls in what goes on in that area. The exterior appearances, the homeowners association controls the landscaping, they control the snow removal, they control the streetscape, and it's, for me, was a very good choice to make in that. Right now, Discovery Park has about 170 units total between the single-family, the duplexes, and the two condominium buildings. The full build-out will be about 230 units, I believe, altogether when it gets done. And again, it's in a phased approach in that, and hopefully we'll see, as the economy picks up again, some more of that completion work done. It wasn't a decision on my part to move into Discovery Park, as I had had a nice house and a big yard, and as I got to my retirement side of the house and that, I went, you know, I don't like to mow the lawn and plow out the snow and do that kind of stuff, and I'm now in an area that takes care of that. I really do think that my experience working with the Discovery Park group and with the Peterson Group as part of the developer of that, has been really a good experience in that. Bob personally has been on the Board of Directors until this year. We have had a lot of issues we've had to go through in that. It's fun doing with homeowners, everybody has a different idea on what a tree is and what a rock is, and how to build a fence, and how tall it should be, and what color it should be. And it is good to have a nice, strong homeowners group that really has those details put together. So you really do understand what you're expected to have and what's expected to happen in that area and that. So I know a lot of developers in town in that, I am very happy with what I've seen, at least in Discovery Park in that, and somebody talked about it being a cookie cutter subdivision. Well, I'm not quite sure it's a cookie cutter subdivision, I think it's a very nice subdivision that everybody has a lot of pride in. We don't have issues in the subdivision with, you know, crime and those kind of issues. Now, I mean, our biggest thing is who's got what color fence in that, and we can deal with those things on an individual basis. So, again, I think it's a very good development that we've seen in Discovery Park, and if Bob takes at least that same development and does even better in West Park, I think this would be a great opportunity for all. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Kniefel?
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, I'm Violet Hulse, and I live at 6530 West Diamond Boulevard, I know a few of you. I've had 31 years of experience in real estate, and it's very interesting, you've got your job ahead of you, and I don't envy you. I can also say some good things about Mr. Peterson, I've sold some of his houses, but my concerns are where I live and what influence the project that is before us now is going to bring to me. And the concerns that I have are not necessarily that I'm against it, I'm just saying you better do something about the problems that we've got, and I'm hoping that you will take that into consideration. First of all, this, the pits have been, I've been there since 1979, 1980, we moved in, and the pits have been on our minds and in the foreground with all of the problems that it has brought, and I think the history is in your package, or it's in mine. So those are still the problems that we are faced with all the time. But I live in a very peaceful, quiet little house, lost my husband, lived there, raised my kids partly. Anyway, the problems that I have is, one of them is traffic. About a month ago, less than a month ago, I didn't put it in my journal, but... ago, less than a month ago, I didn't put it in my journal, but, a month ago, somebody came out of West Park, didn't watch the, uh, the stop sign, and hit me in the back. She didn't do any damage to her car or mine, but we exchanged tax, you know, insurance names and so forth. And, uh, she said, "I usually look," but I didn't that time, "but I have noticed since then, it is a hazardous spot. I don't recommend that there be a light there, but maybe a caution or something, to let those people know that we are, we are coming from the west side of, uh, West Diamond Boulevard, and, uh, there's people that live beyond them. Sometimes you don't even think that they are aware that we live there." They just barrel right onto Diamond Boulevard, and I think most of the traffic from this project will come out of, uh, the subdivision, uh, West Park subdivision, uh, in that, in that direction. They will, maybe a few of them will go in the other direction, out to Kincaid. Uh, the water is a big problem for me. Any kind of activity that goes on out there, the construction, all of that interferes with my water. There's a comment out there in the history, from 2004, uh, you'll see my, my, if you read that, or if you have read it, it's in there. Uh, I think all of us out there in the San Lake area are very, very conscious of our water. We have a well in Septic, and the chances of us ever getting water out there are probably pretty minimal. I would like to see some kind of a water provision in case, uh, the pits really destroy all of our water and all have to, uh, do something else. Like, if you live on public water, you know, have big, um, barrels of water. Even catch a can when I lived there, one time was better. We had it off the roof. We could do that, or have a cistern. But, uh, the, the pits has affected our, um, our water wells. So please be aware of that, and, uh, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer you.
Any questions for Ms. Hulse? Ms. Pease?
Yes, um, this whole, there, there are in our packet reports of well, changes in private well, um, productivity. They're mostly from September '04, when I gather, construction was going on. Um, what has happened post-construction? These are all, yeah, yours is dated 2004. Have there been recurrent problems that you know of? Have you had recurrent? I guess I should ask your personal experience.
Right. I, uh, I change my filter every month, and, um, it, uh, it has increased. Uh, anytime there's activity over there, anytime there's construction over there, and if they use that, that well that's on the property to settle the dust, when there's a lot of activity, and that's what they were doing, they, I, I guess the state gave them permission to draw 80,000 gallons of water, and, uh, 'cause that's in the past, but I don't know what kind of project they're gonna, how much activity they're gonna have there. But, uh, if they raise a lot of dust, and they use that well to settle the dust, we're gonna have the same problem again.
Okay, so I think I'm hearing two things. When there is construction activity, you notice some kinda change in your well?
Absolutely, absolutely. And I, I think there's other people who experience that as well.
Okay. And then, use of a well on the site for construction, you think affects how?
Oh, I know it does.
Affects you how?
Oh, uh, there's reduced, um, pressure in my well. Uh, sometimes there's, uh, black gunk. I brought some, uh, I, I brought one of my filters to the, um, uh, San Lake Community Council meeting, and they said, "You mean you drink that water?"
Okay.
It's, it's bad.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any further questions, Mr. Blomacher?
I, I have a question about, you, when you say they do the construction, do you get a lot of silt in your water, or is this when the black gunk appears?
Silt, um, there's some silt, but not, uh, it's mostly black, black gunk, and I've had it tested. I'm not on a monitoring wall. I monitor it myself.
Okay. And have you ever had this material tested to see what it is, or anything like that?
Yes, they've, they've tested it.
And what is, what, what do they tell you?
Mathium, uh, all of the things that, uh, that you don't really like. I don't have any, um, uh, I don't have anything that's harmful to me. But, uh, it's, it's certainly annoying when I do my laundry. Cleaning up all the, the toilets that I have, uh, you know, cleaning the bathtub, everything gets this kinda stuff in it.
Okay.
It's a nuisance.
Okay. Ms. Yoshima?
Uh, Violet, may I call you Violet?
Yes, you may, honey.
Uh, how, um, um, how large is your lot?
Two and a half acres.
Two and a half acres?
Right.
Okay. And, do you know how deep your well is?
Yes, 300 feet, estimated. We didn't, the previous owner did not have a well log, and we searched everywhere for it.
Okay.
It's around 300 feet.
And, um, how far are you away from the opportunity to hook up to public water?
Uh, 600 feet, uh, my house is 600 feet from, uh, from Diamond Boulevard, and, uh, Sky Hills is the closest area. It would be very nice if they could just bring one big thing in case our wells really fail. It would be really nice. And I think Norman Welpberg tried to get that at one time. I, I think that's in the, in your packet, but that didn't happen.
So you would be in favor of the extension of public water?
I'm, I'm sorry?
You would be in favor of the extension of public water?
If we needed to, yes. I, I would be in favor of that. The cost, however, is very prohibitive. I think everybody there would need a little bit of assistance. Uh, you know, they can supply all the water wells they want to the, to the villages, but we're still here, wondering if we're gonna have enough drinking water to drink. It's, it's good for us.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Ms. Hulse?
Well, good luck to all of you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else that wishes to testify?
My name is Barry Lehinger, I live in, uh, West Park subdivision on Kenai Field Loop. And, uh, when I bought into the subdivision, I had a reasonable expectation that, uh, design would remain as it was at that time. And, uh, I'm not in favor of, uh, increasing the density with more traffic and the other issues that, that'll bring. Um, that's about it.
Okay, and, sir, could you just spell your last name, please?
L-E-H-I-N-G-E-R.
Any, uh, questions for Mr. Lehinger? Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to testify?
Good evening, excuse me, good evening, thank you for your time. My name is Gordon Sloan. I live in Mirwood subdivision, which is just north of West Park, right across the street from Kincaid. Lived there since 2003. I am also a Realtor, uh, with Remax Properties, and over the past years have represented the Peterson Group in these developments of the upper-end condos. Um, there's been a, a lot of valid concerns here tonight. I just wanted to point out a couple, um, uh, key, key information, key, uh, points that, uh, some of the homeowners have expressed tonight. Um, over the last, uh, eight years, I've done two, uh, major developments for the Peterson Group, been the lead Realtor on them, both in, uh, Southport, which is a master-planned community in Anchorage. Um, first one was Spinnaker Bay, which had 32 units, all duplex styles, and currently Discovery Park. Um, our target market, some of the concerns that the homeowners have shared tonight have been very valid concerns. Uh, on a professional standpoint, coming from a Realtor's aspect, I agree with a lot of the homeowners looking out the back, "Hey, I don't wanna see, um, a, a certain type of product." They expected to see a single-family. One of the things I wanna point out to them, though, one of the benefits of this development is Peterson Group's, if, if no one's seen West, or, uh, Discovery Park, please go see it. Uh, it's very well done, and this will be the same. Um, when you're looking out the back, they're gonna have larger yards, you know that it's gonna be well-kept, and the landscaping's gonna be maintained. If it dies, the homeowners association replaces it. One of the homeowners expressed that the trees were dying and no one takes care of them. It's very, um, much more restrictive than West Park itself, when you have a development like this. So let's say six years down the road, you're looking out your back window, these are still gonna look very nice. They're not gonna be weathered paint, there's not gonna be an odd shed built in the back, there's not gonna be mixed fences, giving a bad, um, viewing to those homeowners. So that's something they should, uh, keep in mind. Um, the other thing, on these types of products, they really target more, my target market over the last eight years has been the baby boomers downsizing. It's not your typical condo developments. Um, they target a lot of retirees, lost single professionals, slope workers, pilots. That is, um, probably 80% of my target market over the last eight years. Um, with that said, I don't see a lot of traffic. I don't have a crystal ball to say who's gonna buy these, and who, how many cars are gonna be there, but out of, um, Broadmore subdivision in West Anchorage, which had, had a lot of units, there was not that much traffic. Um-
Please summarize, sir.
I'd just like to say Peterson Group takes pride in its developments, and when I started representing them eight years ago, he made a comment to me that, "I wanna drive by my subdivisions 10 years down the road and say I built that subdivision." Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Sloan? Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Sloan, uh, as a, uh, Realtor and broker, um, I'm, um, curious, you deal with a lot of buyers and a lot, and you understand how much due diligence they do, and how much they kind of get blurry-eyed and pass over, i- as going through the documents when they're buying. Uh, what is the, uh, uh, what, what would you say are the best ways of alerting a, uh, potential buyer to something that might be a long-term impact?
Such, uh, are you talking about like the airplane noise that was brought up earlier?
That'd be one of them.
Or, or something? Um, well, a lot of that's part of, as you know, it's, it's part of the homeowner's property disclosure. When you're selling a home, you, that is a question on a property disclosure. By law, you have to disclose. Um, it would be in, in the documents like you guys have, uh, discussed earlier tonight. And, not to mention, like I said, I live in Mirwood, and they shake my house, so I'm very familiar with, um, people at the, it's pretty obvious eventually that you're, you're gonna see the planes flying over. Um, in, in the sense of, do you want me more detailed with what you're asking? I mean, are you talking, more about the planes, more, how it's gonna be built, or?
There's, uh, it, it's one of the, one of the prime concerns in, in the, uh, area around the airport.
Right.
And, uh, the community council's addressed it on many, many occasions. There's even a special committee of the community council, working with the airport, uh, on, on these. And, um, I just wondered if you have a, a magic, uh, solution for us?
(laughing)
Because we, we don't wanna be onerous, but, but we, but we wanna be effective in making sure that people are, are alerted, and, not just 10 out of 100, uh, I mean, every single one should, should, should say, "Oh, I'd, you know, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have known that."
Right. And like I said, uh, initially, it's in our paperwork. But, on a resale side of things, let's say three, four, or five years down the road, how is that future homeowner gonna know? Um, when I professionally sell homes, and I'm going into a neighborhood, I encourage, I mean, there's only so much due diligence at the buyer and, and the Realtor. If the Realtor's experienced in it, they should be disclosing to their client. However, I always encourage my buyers, "Talk to the neighbors, too," because it's not just maybe the airplanes. Um, you might not like your neighbor, right off the bat. So, and the neighbors, um, are a wealth of information, because they're gonna tell you everything from today on, if they've been there.
Yeah. So that's really up to the Realtor, and who's happened to be, uh, selling the property, then?
Right.
But if it's a, if it's a homeowner selling his own, his own unit, then?
The, the way I, I work my business, I want my buyers or my sellers to know everything possible, pros and cons. Um, and, and any good Realtor should. And it's, um, also up to the buyer's due diligence to, to do their research. Um, in this case, you would have a, a resale certificate, 'cause it is part of, uh, the homeowners association, plus the West Park resale certificate. Um, so you'd have a lot of minutes if there was any issues or things coming from the municipality on, on the, uh, you were saying the committee on the airplanes and, and stuff like that, or any issues of that area. Um, generally, they're brought out in the first few pages of the minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, Mr. Sloan, just hold tight here, wait a minute, we got some other stuff here. Mr. Barrett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to take a stab at Mr. Wilson's question and get in a plug to the planning department. Um, I get calls like that almost every day, either from real estate professionals, or from buyers, or from sellers. There's a very easy due diligence you can do, and unfortunately, that doesn't help anyone here tonight. Go to the planning department with the address of the property you're looking at. Ask to see the comprehensive plan. That will give you a good feel of what's coming along in the near-term future. Then ask to see the zoning map for the area, so you can see the zones around the property that you're considering. And then ask for a copy of the zoning code, so that you can see what the development requirements in those zoning districts are. It's a little bit of homework, but on a 200, 300, 400,000 dollar home, it's time well-spent. Thank you.
Yes, uh, if I may respond, the, the, um, the likelihood that, um, a high percentage of homeowner, uh, prospective homeowners, or homebuyers, will do all three of those steps, is pretty low. I mean, I'm, I'm pretty informed about this kinda thing, and I never went to the planning department and looked up my lot. But, um, is, maybe this, this is a good time to ask the question, about the overlay zone proposal. Is that going to be, uh, for, uh, Noy's overlay zone? Is that, uh, in the works?
There's, there's one, there are several in the works. Noy's is one of them, yes.
Good. Any further questions for Mr. Sloan?
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to testify?
My name is Robert Paulson, P-A-U-L-S-O-N, and my question is for Mr. Barrett. If he ever read the UAA, uh, report that they made up, on the hydrology and, uh, geology of the subdivision.
Mr. Chairman, yes, sir. I have the reports going back as far as 2004, and I also have, uh, Dr. Monks, uh, from January 2010. The older ones we were through, read through as part of the earlier, um, processes that we've been involved with. And, uh, a month ago, six weeks ago, I went to talk to, um, the hydrogeologists in the department to make sure that they had seen, uh, Dr. Monks', uh, 2010 study. And yes, they had. I had read it with them. Uh, nothing in there to change anyone's mind, I'm afraid.
Okay, well, my comment is, the court didn't, didn't get to read that report. It was, uh, due to legal maneuvering, or whatever. It was deemed new evidence, and it wasn't, it could not be submitted. So none of those judges saw that report, and it was written by three PhDs. It was a $56,000 report, and it was very, very thorough. So, and, my concern was water, and my water was affected. I live at, on the south side of Diamond, and when they started pulling water out at 80,000 gallons a day on that one well, my arsenic level went from two parts per billion to almost 30 parts per billion, which meant I had to put in, um, a water system that would, a reverse osmosis system, that I have to change filters every six months. So, we bathe in that water, and occasionally drink it, because you're getting a pencil-sized stream, and it only holds a gallon, and that's after about three hours. And that's all I have to say. I'm opposed to the, uh, added density to the well, or to the pits.
Any questions for, uh, Mr. Paulson, uh, Ms. Pease?
Mr. Paulson, was that drop in your, I'm gathering there was a drop in your water volume? Was that, has that persisted since the construction, or was that a condition that happened during construction?
It, um, for me, it came almost after the construction. The person that was affected first was west of the construction site, was Betty Dodds. And hers went up to 26 parts- And hers went up to twenty-six parts per billion, and I followed her six months later with almost thirty parts per billion, so.
And then, I think you also mentioned the drop in water volume. You said something about a pencil trickle? Is that a?
Well, that's from the reverse osmosis system.
Oh, I see.
Because for every three gallons that it processes, it dispels two gallons. So, it takes a long time to fill that little reservoir, and it's under your sink.
Okay, and have you and the neighbors documented any of this and submitted it to the municipality or to?
No, because they consider it a naturally occurring substance. So, you can't prove that just because they drew the eighty thousand gallons out a day that that was cause and effect. But I never had it before they drew it out, and neither did Betty Dodds. And she has a record every year because she has a community well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Pease?
Just a quick clarification, Mr. Paulson. So, the, during the construction process, they could draw up to eighty thousand gallons a day, is what I understand?
I'm sorry, I, kind of hard of hearing, so.
During the construction process, I understand that they could draw up to eighty thousand gallons a day on the well. After, and then eventually, within six months, your well is in, is in the same condition as it is now? Is it the same thirty parts per billion or?
No, it's now starting to go back down. But if they start using it again for dust control, then I would expect I'll go through the same cycle again where it spikes.
So, would it be your opinion that no matter what construction happened on this site?
Well, it wasn't the construction, it was the drawing out for dust control.
I understand. Regardless if they were building a hundred units or four hundred units, the fact remains that this fact that they use that particular well to, to draw water for dust control, and that, that caused your well to act with, acting now. I'm trying to get to the point where, should the well be used or not regardless of what happens on the?
Well, right now, the kind of the way I look at it, down in the pits, they're building one or two houses, maybe three at a time, so they don't have a dust control problem. It's when they went in and started doing mass projects all at the same time. And I counted today, there's just three houses being built, and they're a long way apart. So, there's no dust control problem.
Yeah, typically, it would be during road construction, you know, putting utilities, the major, you know, the common utilities in, that's when they do the dust control.
Yeah, it could be road construction, and it could be all the digging up because they have to put a foundation in and whatnot, but, and they have road construction to do. I mean, not all those roads are in.
Are there, are there, are you aware of any, in the, in the, in the new subdivision or any fire hydrants that are on city water?
Not that I know of. But, you know, there's no vegetation to speak of down there than probably grass.
So, is, is Westport right now, West Park, I mean, is it, is the existing subdivision that this backs up to, to the north on city water? So, there would be, there would be fire hydrants there? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Paulson, any, let's see, any other questions?
Okay, I just want to, I have one question for you. Now that they've stopped drawing water from the well, you say your, your arsenic levels are dropping.
It's dropping.
Okay. Now, what about the volume? Did you ever have any problem with the volume of water?
No.
No problem with volume?
No.
It was just that you were getting a higher level of arsenic than you, you had previously?
Right.
Okay, and you talked about this little trickle of water, and that's a result of your reverse osmosis system. It's got to pump stuff through the, through the membrane, and it just comes through kind of slow.
Right.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else wish to testify? Does anybody else wish to testify? I'm going to close this thing down unless we get some people up here. Don't wait to be the last person.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Tim Potter. I'm typically here speaking on behalf of clients. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of myself.
So, you've got three minutes.
I've got three minutes, and I'm going to try and use those three minutes to show you that I still remember why I have gray hair. And I didn't when this gravel pit operation started. But it's my opinion that the Sand Lake redevelopment plan, that's been referred to tonight, is in fact the current district guidance document and planning document for this specific area. The Sand Lake redevelopment plan is the result of an exhaustive effort of the Planning and Zoning Commission, staff and community in 1982 and 1983. Many of the special meetings that were held with the community and Planning and Zoning Commission were on Thursday nights, and I know that Deanna Essert was there. I'm one of the few people in the room. I know there was no planning department people except Jerry Weaver, who's not here tonight, that were around at that time. So, I'll say I'm a resident expert, as Deanna is, on the Sand Lake gravel pit or the Sand Lake redevelopment plan. Of special note within that plan, and I'll try and be quick, is that the plan calls for four hundred and eighty acres worth of area to have a gross density of eight dwelling units per acre. That's both on the west side of Sand Lake Road and the east side of Sand Lake Road where the gravel pits were. The plan acknowledged the comprehensive plan density of the 1982 comp plan at three to six dwelling units per acre, but set a gross density of eight dwelling units per acre, specifically acknowledging that as some acreage was used in the area for non-residential development, such as parks and schools, wastewater, list stations, those kinds of things, that in order to maintain the total number of units that had been identified and, and set up in the plan, both the comp plan and the Sand Lake redevelopment plan, that they needed to maintain a gross density of eight dwelling units per acre. This point is reinforced by the example within the document that talks about taking a eight dwelling unit per acre gross density and taking half of the property away and adding up with sixteen dwelling units per acre and probably a rezoned R3 specifically noted in that report to make up and, and maintain that density as planned. This was a very forward-thinking plan, which strongly recommended things such as density transfers and implemented by, and implemented that by clustered development and PUDs as their recommendations. The foundation of this plan was tested all the way to the state Supreme Court, thank you, Deanna Essert and others, which established its authority as the community had come to depend upon the document to guide future development. I think that's very important, and I'll sum up. The proposed project, Salar, is both rational and appropriate given the Sand Lake redevelopment plan. In my view, this type of development was anticipated by and encouraged by the Sand Lake redevelopment plan. And in closing, sometimes we need to look back to see where we really are supposed to be going. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I have a number of quotations I can take directly out of the plan to support what I've just presented.
Okay, Ms. Dean?
Mr. Potter, could you make some suggestions? Do you have any for the department recommendations regarding this particular conditional use change? Do you have any suggested changes to what the department recommendations are?
I'd like you to repeat that because it really is hard. I agree with Mr. Paulson. I've complained about this for years. It's hard to hear. So, if you can speak right into the mic.
And this conditional use permit, do you have any suggested changes to the department recommendations that were listed in our packet?
I actually don't. It calls for, and in the Sand Lake redevelopment plan, it really called for different design, bringing in a variety of densities, types of units, and those kinds of things, which I believe the Salar plan does. I believe that their first plan, which had fourplexes, triplexes, duplexes, and single-family, in going to the Sand Lake Community Council meeting and listening, the community did react to that, and the Peterson Group stepped down, I think contrary to what the Sand Lake redevelopment plan really called for. But they tried to mitigate and modify the plan to put in duplex and single-family only. You know, I'll be so bold as to say, when the plating board was looking at the existing single-family residential components of West Park that have currently been built, erred in allowing them to be put in at a density less than the comprehensive plan minimum density of three dwelling units per acre. Because I believe that it actually comes out at a density that's in the two-point-three or less than three. And while that's probably a controversial approach to take, it was very clear when the Sand Lake redevelopment plan was done, just after the eighty-two comp plan, that making sure that we had adequate density in certain parts of town on the areas that were left to be developed to meet the growth needs of the community for housing, that densities need to be maintained. And in 1982, eighty-three, to think that this town was thinking probably far forward than what it currently is from a planning standpoint, to look at density transfers, a variety of types of development types, those kinds of things, is really something we should reflect back on and take into the future because that really is our future.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Potter? Mr. Frederick?
Thank you. Mr. Potter, I want to ask you about something that you didn't speak directly to, but I consider you to be an expert. If there is an expert, you're probably it on evaluating these sorts of developments and their relation to the comprehensive plan and et cetera.
Lately, I've thinking my only, my only asset is that I can actually still remember some of the things that I've experienced.
Yeah, so we'll catch you while you still can. I'm, I'm a little concerned about the TIA issue and the apparent statement by the traffic department that this original TIA doesn't, it doesn't require going back to essentially redo it or recheck the, the numbers based on the fairly significant changes in the, in the pattern of development in, in West Park. I mean, there, there was not envisioned schools, I think, at the, at the original time of the, of the TIA and on down the line. And I just, I'm asking for your opinion if you think that, that is a reasonable conclusion for the traffic department to come to, or would you question it? Were you in a, in a position to do so?
In many cases, I would question it, but looking at this one and having worked on Lucy Pit and the Sand Lake gravel pit and, and other things, there's an awful lot of acreage that has come offline that is not going to contribute traffic to Sand Lake Road, West Diamond, or even West Park. And in this case, looking at the total numbers of units that were originally proposed within the West Park development, just the area west of Sand Lake Road, it was over eight hundred and something.
Right, yeah.
And now, the total outcome's going to be much less than that because there's quite a number of acres that have been pulled out. Not knowing exactly what the design of the elementary school and the middle school are going to be, the determination of what is really needed and where that targeted potential improvement or TIA should look is what the results are going to be out of those projects.
So, it, it may be that the TIA may bear closer scrutiny when the, when the school projects come online rather than?
It, it depends on what the access routes are for the school.
Right.
And in looking at how the school district had, and actually, I guess Mr. Kneefel's not here anymore, but he was the traffic engineer when that site selection was being done. And it, what it looked at was having access on Lucy Street and out to Kincaid. And in that vein, most of the traffic, if not all of the traffic, going to both the elementary and the middle school, except for emergency traffic, would likely not come into West Park.
Right.
If in fact, that's the way it ends up being developed. And that was what was preferred in the site selection study when those schools were, those sites were selected. In fact, I think there's Eightieth or Eighty-Fourth Avenue, half width right of way or right of way, and the school district was actually interested in vacating that so that Lucy Street didn't connect to West Park because they didn't want that access there and the traffic associated with the school. So, given that, I think that it's, it's premature to look at it now because you really don't know what the impact of the schools are going to be. So, you're trading out somewhere in the neighborhood of maybe three or four hundred units of, of trip generation for a couple of schools, and that traffic may not even be incorporated into the West Park traffic circulation issue.
Well, and it's almost a separate issue from, from this, but, and regardless of whether another unit gets built in West Park or not, that intersection of, of West Park Drive and Diamond Boulevard is a, is a, is dead people waiting to happen. I mean, it really is, and I'm surprised that there haven't been more serious accidents at that intersection than there, than there apparently have been.
Um.
It's a, it's a terrible intersection.
I would not disagree with that. Having been out there yesterday, driving around again, getting prepared for tonight, I would think that there needs to be some vegetative cutback, so especially the site visibility triangles, especially to the, to the west are improved, and that can be done without any channelization improvements or anything. But I think there is a safety issue there from a site visibility.
Thanks for your input.
Thanks.
Ms. Pease, do you have a question or?
I think Mr. Frederick asked what I wanted.
Okay, Mr. Barrett?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Potter's recollections are the same as mine. One, we don't really have any specifics about the schools. Two, as I recall, the access is Kincaid to Lucy. And three, and this is probably what it's all about, the, the schools are not even in the capital improvements budget for another nine years, I believe, 2020, with construction occurring sometime after that. So, certainly, these are going to be looked at again, and by that time, there are going to be a lot of improvements needed, I'm sure, just based on growth throughout the general area, expansion around the airport, and so forth. So, this is an area that will be coming back. Thank you.
Ms. Pease?
Yes, to Mr. Barrett, regarding the West Park intersection, I'm a little bit familiar with it. We've heard that it's, it's hazardous. We didn't get the picture of traffic flow for the surrounding area, but is it reasonable to assume that because this tract is so close to West Diamond that most traffic will hop on and off via West Park, will go to West Diamond via West Park? Is that logical? Again, we don't, we don't see how the roads curve around and how many intersections you have to go through if you go north. But, so can you describe for us what the, whether the traffic's likely to go south or north?
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Pease, I'm afraid I don't remember the, the projections with the arrows showing the turns and the straight-ahead trips. I would strongly suspect it's going to be maybe sixty, forty, West Diamond versus Kincaid, Kincaid being the forty. But I, I would like to mention that part of the improvements that have been done are deceleration and turn lanes at Kincaid, West Park, and at Diamond, West Park. And I will ask code enforcement to go out with me to look at this site visibility problem. The times I've been out there, I've not noticed that there was an issue at Diamond and West Park, but if there is, it's certainly something we want to address. Thank you.
And just to follow up on that, you know, although the total traffic from this phase might not exceed what was originally expected from the full Sand Lake-West Park development, is it logical that there might be an acute issue here? One person testifying, I think her name was Ms. Nelson, commented that there would be over one hundred homes served by each of these driveways compared to fifty homes by any of the other spurs coming out of the development. And would that not merit some sort of little spot traffic analysis, peak pressure on the intersections and that sort of thing?
The proposed driveways onto West Park were looked at specifically by fire and by traffic, and all I can tell you is that they passed their review.
So, you don't have any numbers, and you wouldn't need any? You wouldn't feel the need for any numbers?
I love numbers, Ms. Pease, but no, I don't have any with me. I love numbers, Ms. Pease, but no, I don't have any with me.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions from Mr. Potter, who's already sat down? Thank you, sir. How many people still wish to testify? Give me a show of hands. Okay, well, I've got some people that got to take a break, so we're going to take a five-minute break, come back, and get through the rest of this. Order? Is there anybody else that wishes to testify?
Good evening. My name's Tina Simmons, S-I-M-M-O-N-S, and I live at 5860 Big Bend Loop, and I want to continue just quickly on the traffic that was brought up between Diamond and West Park. I commute that way every morning. There is another issue besides visualization of Diamond going on to, from West Park to Diamond. In the winter, that hill is steep and treacherous and icy. The development that is being looked at this evening, the, one of the entrances is on that hill, okay? If you do not have a four-wheel-drive vehicle, you will not make that hill in the winter. On top of that, with the increased density, it's going to make it even harder if you are turning on to West Park from Diamond, and you have a vehicle coming on to West Park, inevitably, there are going to be numerous accidents, because you cannot stop. In fact, at this point in time, I almost hit one of our neighbors because of that. The cars were parked in a manner that, um, they shouldn't have been done. It was two police cars. They were blocking my lane. Unfortunately, they did see me coming, and so they didn't move out of the way, but I had no stopping ability on that hill. Um, so that's just personal, personal experience. The other thing that I would like to bring forth to your attention is that there has been a breach of good faith here. The people who bought houses in Big Bend Loop and others in West Park, they bought those houses under the knowledge that that whole area had been platted for single development homes, and in my mind, this is a breach of good faith. And this good faith has been breached even further in the fact that the HOA was given a sizable donation to support this. I just would like to make sure that you guys consider those breaches of good faith in your decision tonight. I appreciate the time and, um, your services here. Thank you.
If you have any questions for Ms. Simmons?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for your time. My name is Lori Chikowski, common spelling, C-Z-A-J-K-O-W-S-K-I. I live at 5889 Big Bend Loop. My backyard will abut this development. I do oppose it, in addition to many of my neighbors that are here this evening. In response to the traffic question on the 60/40 percent that is estimated for these, um, new homeowners to leave the, the West Park subdivision through the Diamond exit, being 60 percent, I disagree with that estimate. I think it will be much higher. The speed limit on Diamond is 45 miles an hour, as opposed to going through the subdivision and exiting out Kincaid Drive, which is 25 miles an hour. So because of their proximity to Diamond, I do believe that they will use Diamond rather than going through the subdivision. I would like to support, where did she go, the lady who was just here, her comment about the treacherousness of the hill. As you do enter the subdivision, it is extremely steep. There is a curve at the bottom. There were many accidents where drivers went into the ditch over the last few winters. I've lived there since 2007, and it is very dangerous. We've had a lot of sanding trucks there because of it, and that doesn't seem to help because of the wind conditions in the pit. I also have a letter from my neighbor across the street. She wasn't able to be here much longer. She was having fatigue, so I'd like to submit that into evidence for you, if I may.
That you may. Um, are there any questions? Just hold on to the letter and give it to us when you're, when we're done questioning. Any questions here from Ms. Chizak?
Chikowski.
Chikowski. Uh, Ms. Pease?
Yes, could you explain where the cars are going off? Is it on West Park that they're sliding on, or is it Diamond where they're, you say they're going? I think I heard you say they're going off the road.
We, we can't hear you. Why don't you grab that and take it over to the, there you go.
I love a visual aid.
There you go.
Sorry. The curve, this is the curve, the part of the hill that is incredibly steep is right here at the top, so as you're coming down, to try and stop for any entering traffic or traffic that is coming out is going to be extremely difficult. Plus, as you take this curve, there's a, there's a steep slope here, so you can't really see around this corner, so any traffic exiting or entering here is also going to be an issue. I'm rather surprised that the developer hasn't considered having an exit or entrance onto Sand Lake, as opposed to in West Park Drive. Was that good? Could you do that?
Yes, thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, thank you, ma'am. If you want to give us that, uh, letter, we'll enter it in the record. Thank you. Anybody else wish to testify?
Thank you for this opportunity to express our opinions and our concerns about this proposed conditional use. My name is Liz Vasquez. I am a resident of the area. I live right off Raspberry on Tenana Drive. I have lived there for the past 14 years, and we have a septic tank and, uh, well, so we do not have city water. I have, um, there's several due process concerns I, I do have, in that this body does not appear to have a copy of the traffic study, which is a very concern, a core concern of this group of, uh, individuals that have come before you. It may also be outdated, because they may not have considered the proposed expansion of the airport. You also have another due process concern here, and that is, this body does not appear to have knowledge of the geological/Sand Lake watershed study, which would be critical, I would think, in making a decision with regard to this conditional use. And also, I would add that knowing about that traffic study would be critical in your It's also questionable, another due process concern that I observe, is that the contribution made to the West Park Homeowner Association at about the same time that most residents were not involved in approving the conditional use, it seemed at the Board of Directors, um, I'm not, I don't live in West Park, so it, but it appears as a big question mark about how many people really knew what the directors were doing of that homeowners' association. So I kind of see that as also a really big due process concern. So I have outlined thus far three, uh, critical issues that this body appears not to have knowledge of. For you to go and proceed to make a decision of this magnitude without having those three pieces of information seems to me quite premature and lacking of, of good judicial judgment. Um, the Sand Lake, just for your information, the Sand Lake redevelopment plan was never enacted as law. It was simply a resolution, and at that time, there was no recognized water problem. But anyway, that's all I have to say tonight. I think it's, it, uh, the traffic study is absolutely a critical component of your decision-making. I would think the geological/Sand Lake watershed study would be a critical component for you to consider before you undertake this serious decision. And I would also, um, invite you to inquire as to the circumstances of the Board of Directors of West Park Homeowners Association writing that letter in support of the project. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Ms. Vasquez?
Thank you, ma'am.
Is there anybody else that wishes to testify? Is there anybody else that wishes to testify? Okay, I think we've got, what, two minutes reserved for, uh, rebuttal from the applicant?
Chairman, members of the commission, uh, two minutes isn't nearly enough to address all that we need to rebut tonight, so I would ask you to ask a lot of questions of us. We have some experts here that have been involved, uh, in, uh, long history of West Park and, and our, and our current project. So, couple, couple notes here. Uh, I have with me a copy of the public offering statement, which, uh, is given to all homeowners, uh, prior to them closing on their home and purchasing a house in the West Park development. That public offering statement clearly outlines that single-family homes and duplexes, and that development rights on lots that are undeveloped are retained, uh, for the developers. So, uh, I can answer questions on that and then submit it to the chairman for review. The traffic impact study update is on page 78 of the packet. It's, uh, an overview, uh, but it has been reviewed and approved by the traffic department. Dave Grineer, our engineer, can answer many questions in regard to the traffic analysis and the studies that have been done over the years. Also like to note, West Diamond is, uh, planned for an upgrade in the future, uh, is my understanding. Uh, as in regards to the water table, um, we have an expert, a hydrogeologist, who's been involved in the long history of the water table issue in West Park here, to, uh, answer any questions and provide history. Um, and I just want to note that all appeals were denied, and that the water table issue was taken to the Supreme Court and to the Superior, first to the Superior Court, excuse me, and then to the Supreme Court of Alaska, and all of those appeals were denied. So, Mr. Young is here to answer your questions. Um, I want to talk briefly on the landscaping, uh, and some of the...
Please turn your eyes.
...comments, um, with, uh, the West Park Homeowners Association. Mr. Peterson, when he purchased the property from the previous owner, they agreed to, the two of them, put in $25,000 apiece to upgrade the landscaping on West Park. This was an agreement, uh, as a part of the purchase, that happened over two years ago, and, uh, that was merely so that we could upgrade the landscaping on West Park, so that we could sell homes, because the landscaping on West Park had been degraded, the moose had eaten it, and, uh, was not up to the standards, um, that we wanted. So it had nothing to do with the homeowners' association. We merely told the homeowners' association that we were going to do that. So, uh, I, I'm, we're here to answer any questions you may have. There are numerous, I'm sure, and, uh, we can bring the appropriate experts in, uh, regarding the, the questions.
Ms. Dean?
Through the chair, um, I have a few questions. Um, one of them was, on the south side of the subdivision, there's very few duplexes, but there's a lot of duplexes on the north side of the subdivision. Any particular reason why there's more duplexes there than on the south side?
Um, yeah, actually, that's a good observation, but no. Uh, we worked really hard, uh, when we redesigned the development, we worked really hard to get the diversity through the phases, and, um, and so we mixed, uh, the duplex units and the single families through, um, the different phases, um, and, uh, Mr., uh...
So you tried to do a mix of units through each phase?
That's correct. That's correct. Uh, to bring, uh, product diversity and diversity to the neighborhood, we spent a lot of time taking the product type, types and clustering them together. So if you look at the map, Mr. Peterson can point to it, the green hu, the green homes are single-family, 30-foot-wide homes, we tried to cluster those together. The blue homes are 21-foot-wide, single-car garage homes, we tried to cluster those together. And then we transitioned through the development and through the phases to provide that diversity.
Um, the fence is come up a little bit, you know, buffering between, um, this particular subdivision and, um, number 2A. Any chance that there could possibly be, um, the developer providing a fence, instead of requiring the individual owners to build as they want a fence?
Yeah. I'd like to address that, Commissioner Dean. Um, in our projects, not everybody wants a fence. Uh, if you go back to Discovery Park, Bob had mentioned, there's 170, uh, families living there, and there's probably a dozen fences, those that have, um, sought to have one. Uh, in, in the case of, um, this boundary line, we're actually probably about six, eight foot below the, because we're in a basin, below the yards that have retaining walls. If you were to look at it, if we had a fence, they'd just look right over and they wouldn't even see the top of it. So it just didn't make any sense at all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Frederick?
Um, a couple of specific questions to the petitioner and whoever you choose, who knows about it, I guess, can, can answer. Um, I had not before it was mentioned by, um, one of the, of the, um, homeowners, that there's a, a well somewhere here, and that's one of the things I want to know, is where is it? This well that apparently was, was approved for 80,000 gallons a day for dust control on the project?
I think Mr. Young can answer your question. Commissioner Frederick, through the chair.
Um, through the chair, the well was, um, north of this property, it was decommissioned, I believe, in 2005, and it was never pumped at capacity.
It was decommissioned in 2005?
Yes.
So it is no longer in existence, then?
It's, it's completely decommissioned. It's, it's not usable.
Okay.
It's underground, cut off 20 feet underground and, and filled with impermeable material.
So if, if you were going to control dust on your, on your project, where would the water come from?
Um, through the chair, the, um, members of the commission, the water would come from the city, from city piped water.
Okay. That helps. Thank you. Um, can I ask the second part of my...
Yes, go ahead.
...question? There, there was a, um, a question of, we got, uh, somebody brought up the, the, uh, steep grade of the West Park Drive, where it, where it comes, uh, north off of Diamond Boulevard, and the, the possibility of, of, um, bad interactions with that first turn-in into your project there. And I believe the last, um, testifier asked, uh, why there hadn't been consideration to access from, from Sand Lake Road, and I'd like you to enlighten us there.
Through the chair, Mr. Frederickson, we've, uh, there, there's a grade issue as far as reaching, uh, Sand Lake Road. It's in the range of 40 feet, uh, from, from the lower road up to Sand Lake. When the original plat was approved, uh, as were the construction plans for West Park Drive, these intersections were taken into consideration. All our grades are less than, 6% or less, which is, uh, well within the, the, um, regulations of the, uh, Design Criteria Manual. Uh, as far as site distance, there, I'd like to address the site distance at Diamond, that was another issue that came up. The, when we built the road back in 2004, um, part of the, uh, design that was, uh, incorporated was a, a deceleration lane as you're coming into the project. That was something that was suggested by the community. It was not a requirement of the, uh, traffic impact analysis, but the, um, White Raven developer, White Raven Development, the original developer, uh, chose to put that in. At that time, we addressed site issue to both the east and the west. There was some clearing that occurred for the, looking to the west at that intersection. And what has occurred is that that vegetation has grown back, and so it's a maintenance And what has occurred is that that vegetation has grown back, and so it's a maintenance issue as far as site distance to the west.
Is that vegetation in Diamond Boulevard right-of-way, or?
Yes, sir, it is. It's within right-of-way. So, this is something I think we can work with the, in this particular case, it's the, this is state right-of-way here, and so we'll contact the state and work to get that cleared up.
Is West Park Drive a city street?
That is correct.
So, it's maintained by the public works, right?
Correct.
So, it gets the same amount of sanding as my intersection, three-quarters of a mile off the road?
I assume so.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Pease.
Yes, I wanted to follow up on two things. First, the effect of the duplexes to the residents who are on Big Bend loop. You mentioned that you had tried to distribute the duplexes throughout the property, but is there any reason other than your sense of distributing things that they couldn't be distributed elsewhere, for example, along the southern street in the property where there's quite a row of single-family homes?
Commissioner Pease, I think if you really studied it, I think you'd find out that the duplexes are actually more predominant towards the north. We originally had all single-family homes along that back area, and when we downsized the project after our first round of comments from the community and the municipality, we decided that it looked better, it felt better, it would certainly sell better, because we would have more diversity, a myriad of product in each phase, it's very important to a developer. The massing on those duplexes that you see there, they're anywhere from 42-foot to 60-foot wide. The reality is, is they fit well with the adjacent houses from a massing standpoint, so we felt very comfortable with that. I believe if someone were to actually go to Discovery Park and go to the back and look at them and see the architectural relief and the roof lines of the back of those duplexes, they look as good as the front. So, I really don't see it as an issue.
If I could follow up on that, in terms of aesthetics, you may, I'll take your word that the massing is in the scale with the single-family homes, but what about this perception that it decreases property values to have duplexes on your back lot line? Is that?
It's completely unfounded. If you read the letter that Bob Mintz had given us on behalf of Carl Gottstein, where the Discovery Development is in South Park, and eight years ago, we had similar fears when we tried to inject a project like that adjacent to 750 to up to $2 million homes, or within a stone's throw. There are zero complaints and there's been zero property value considerations, reductions, and in fact, we've been complimented many times by the homeowners of how they like the project. Many of those people have bought units for their kids or for their parents. It just added a nice diversity to the neighborhood and provided a product for a different profile of buyer, which is very much needed and very much needed in South Anchorage and in West Park, which is prominently, well, exclusively at this point, all fairly large, single-family homes.
Yeah, I have one more.
I just have one comment, Ms. Pease, on that question as well, through the chair. The price point of the product that is adjacent to those homes is similar to the homes in Big Bend. The duplex, the lowest price point of the duplex is $270,000. The bigger duplex reaches $350,000. So, as you compare value to value, there's really not a big difference as well.
You're saying per unit?
That's correct, per unit.
I would like to expound on that, and we'll have units, the 30-foot-wide, single-family units, and the duplexes along Sand Lake have four-car garages in them for storage. And the price ranges will go up to $475,000 in today's value. By the time we develop the project, which is estimated to be an eight-to-10-year project, of course, it'll hopefully increase in value like the rest of our real estate.
And if, another question on the topic of trying to mitigate any potential impacts for Big Bend residents in the adjoining subdivision. With regard to the fence, you said some buyers don't want a fence, and that's understandable, but would it be something you would consider to have a fence along those back units, and then the fence is still optional behind the units that are on the other sides of the street? So, the buyers who will tolerate a fence buy on one side, and the buyers who don't want any fence on the other side?
Well, you almost have to go out there to see the situation, to appreciate my position on that. It's certainly not a financial matter at all, that's a very small piece of this very expensive development. This development has more of everything. It has more parks, it has more open area, it has more sidewalks, it has more trails, it has more space in between the houses than any other condominium development in the municipality of Anchorage, which includes all the ones we've done. So, what it really boils down to is, when we design the fence lines so that they make sense at the end of the day, we basically are going 20-foot back from the back of the building. Well, the yards there are anywhere from 30 to 40-foot deep. If you build a fence right along it, one, you'll find that the top of the fence is below a lot of the yards that are on Big Bend. And you'll also find what you then have created is a corridor between their fences and our fence, that's no man's land. If you don't, if you have a fence where the people want it, those that have pets or children that they're trying to encapsulate into their yard, the other people that don't can just go on out and get onto the trail and, you know, have the opportunity to roam. I think that's going to be a much better scenario at the end of the day.
Any other questions, Ms. Pease?
I have one more question that wasn't buffering. With regard to the concerns of residents who are on wells, we heard from your specialist that the well has been decommissioned, so can you confirm that there wouldn't be any groundwater used during construction? And would you also be amenable to water monitoring similar to what was put in for the Lucy pit, which would give residents on wells recourse to seek some kind of relief if construction in this unit down the road deprives them of their safe well water?
I would like to answer a couple of those questions, and I'd like to defer some of them to Dan Young to answer. The first is, I'm a geologist, I've read all the reports, I read them before I purchased the property, I was confused, we hired Dan Young to unconfuse us. So, I understand these things somewhat. It was 30 years ago that I got my degree, but I can tell you that, and I've been a developer for a long, long time, in Anchorage, almost 30 years, there's nothing that we can do if we use the best management practices in developing this project that can affect that aquifer that's below us. We're a ways away from it, we're a long ways away from it. We would have to go out of our way and do something very stupid, which I'm not willing to do, in order to disturb that in any way. That being the case, it seems unnecessary to have to put in well points and do monitoring. And I didn't come to that decision lightly. I talked to our experts, I read the reports, and I just felt that, you know, it was one more thing, and it was something that really wasn't necessary, but we have capitulated with many, many, many things in order to try to appease everybody on this project. We're happy with it, we can do it, and we think that the community, at the end of the day, is going to be pleased, as the people who live in Discovery Park and the surrounding areas are pleased with that project.
Through the chair, Ms. Pease, and members of the commission. After the court cases found that there was substantial evidence in the record that public health and safety had been met, there was a report done by Dr. Munk and two other professors from the university. They found no significant threat to the groundwater from this development. They raised some questions, but they found no significant threat. After that report was written and presented, Dan Loth, who worked for the onsite services for the municipality, asked them to come into his office and asked them, what would it take to protect the groundwater even more than what they found in the report? And they asked for a monitoring well in the deeper aquifer, and they asked for six inches of topsoil, and they said that would satisfy them. In regard to that, the developer was willing to put in that deeper well. They already had a shallower well that was required by the municipality, and the DEC required the monitoring. I have those results here, if you'd like to see them.
Can you do two things? Just tell us where the well is in the development and just sort of summarize, because, I mean, you'd have to pass it to everybody, I guess.
I have the results right here, if you'd like to see them on the screen.
Oh, yes, yes, on the screen, please.
The response, one well, or actually, two wells, are west of the pond at a site that was selected by Dr. Munk and members of the DEC, as well as members of the university. And what we found was nitrates in 2002 were elevated 2.5 parts per million to a maximum of five parts per million. The drinking water threshold is 10 parts per million, so these are well below the threshold. This is pre-development. With development, you can see there's a steady decline to near the detection limit. So, the nitrates have gone down since the development started and have stayed down. They'll still be monitored, and it doesn't make sense to put more wells and monitor what we already know is not a problem. There's not a source of pollution. But even more so, after the university study, another study, that was 125,000, was spent on more studies. Then there was $150,000 spent for Dr. Kane and some of his students from the UAF to come in. They studied 65 wells, and they age-dated those wells in this area. And what they found was that the water in the first confined aquifer, where Betty Dodds lives over in Seaview Heights, was between 36 and 37 years old. So, those wells, and the people who are here testifying tonight about their wells being at risk, that water is 37 years older than the water in the pond. So, this development and the upper aquifer, the unconfined aquifer, is not even connected to the deeper aquifer where most of the wells are. And the Kane report, or Kane et al. report, also found that there was no significant threat and no specific threat to the groundwater from this development. Monitoring seems, additional monitoring seems unnecessary and just a waste of effort.
Well, thank you. We didn't have any, I didn't see references to that monitoring information in our packet, so I appreciate your answering it.
Ms. Oshomura?
Thank you, through the chair. Well, I can appreciate this site plan and its attractiveness with its parks and walkways, but I do have some concerns for the residents along Big Bend, who anticipated, whether rightly or wrongly, that there would be single-family homes adjacent to them. And so, I'm wondering if there isn't some compromise here that we could substitute some of the duplexes, which if it's the Solstice Plan and the Shadow Plan, the combined mass for those two plans are 4,400 square feet and 3,300 square feet, respectfully, which is considerably larger, I believe, than the single-family homes that are located along Big Bend. And I'm wondering if the petitioner would consider some substitution along Big Bend?
Yes, we would consider that.
The other thing is, I'm trying to, I have somewhat familiarity. So, Big Bend is up here, and then six to eight feet lower, so you have sort of a, Big Bend's on a bench, and then you have a drop-down to the basin. So, what would be, so a fence you don't think is going to be appropriate? Is there anything that would be appropriate that would work as a buffering to give some sort of relief to the single-family residences on Big Bend on the south side?
The only really good forms of buffering are vegetation.
Yeah.
And fences. You know, other than that, we're, if anybody else has any ideas, I'm open.
Well, how are you going to, how are you going to prevent sloughing from the bench, so to speak?
Oh, well, I wish we had a picture of it. Many of the homeowners around Big Bend have retained their yards with various sorts of retainage, six different ways, and then put their fences up. Some of them have graded, you know, graded down into our property. So, there's a myriad of things which make it complex to deal with from a fence standpoint. I mean, we could not really put a fence along our property line, it just wouldn't work, because they've got all kinds of things going.
Yeah.
So, we just tried to figure out the method that would look the best, and this is the way that we planted, I think personally, would look the best, being, having done quite a few projects and knowing how people behave and what they're looking for. Also keep in mind, there's, will be, these homes will be maintained by the homeowners association. We have an extensive amount of landscaping on this project, more than we have ever put on a condominium project, and certainly much, much more than exists in the current, that has been installed than exists in the current part of West Park. There's two reasons for that. One, it's going to look good, and that's going to help us, it's going to help us sell homes. And, well, I forgot the other reason, it's just going to look good. We're doing it. We've got an opportunity out here that we've never had before, I'd like to tell you about, where we have water that exists, we have room in a corner. We're going to actually start a little pocket park where we're going to grow our own trees. If this is an eight-to-10-year project, we're going to incubate our own little nursery. So, what we're hoping to do in the project is, when we plant a tree, is plant a much more of a tree, much more mature tree than what you normally use to. You know, a one-and-a-half-inch diameter tree doesn't amount to much, but when you go to four inches, you have a tree that's 14-foot high. So, we're going to attempt that for the first time, we have the opportunity to do that here. That gives us the ability to be able to afford to put more vegetation on the project.
So, are you suggesting that every single-family home on the south side of Big Bend is going to get a four-inch diameter tree? to get a four-inch diameter tree?
I didn't say that, but
[laughing]
But the trees we plant are going to be bigger and better, and there will be more. It's to everyone's benefit to do that, particularly the developer. The other thing we do is we protect our trees. Trevor had talked about the $50,000 that we're going to spend to enhance West Park. That's down the entire road. When I contemplated purchasing that piece of property, I was just saddened by the state of the trees, the state of the corridor. It's a beautiful street. The trees are dying. The moose have eaten all the deciduous trees. They weren't well protected by the moose. With $50,000, which we intend to spend prior to development and in this next season, hopefully we'll go along the corridor. We're going to have a landscape architect tell us how to plant them, where to plant them, and so that we get our biggest bang for the buck. What we're actually, we're hoping was that the Homeowners' Association would get in behind that effort as well, and we could really see a change in that common collector road. One of the beauties of having more units out there that no one ever mentioned is there'll be more dues from the units going into the Master Homeowners' Association to maintain that landscaping and the vegetation on West Park. There's certainly a benefit there.
Any further questions, Ms. Yoshimura? Ms. Dean?
Mr. Chair, I have a question for you, a Robert's Rules question.
Yes.
I was wondering, when the petitioner and staff presentations are complete and we've closed the public hearing, how would we move, if possible, into a committee of the whole to discuss this particular project?
We have to wait till we finish questioning and I close the public hearing, then it rests with us and we can decide what we want to do.
Do you make a motion at that point?
Yeah.
And then whoever makes the motion can ask to go into committee of the whole?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Barrett?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Peterson had mentioned a photograph. I'm not much of a photographer, but on page 26 of the package, there is a photo standing on Mr. Peterson's property looking to the northeast toward the backs of the homes on Big Bend. Give you a little bit of an idea of the bench that they are on.
Yeah, it depends on how wide those houses are going to be, you know, because they've got 20, 25.
Okay, are there any further questions for the petitioner? Then everybody's had their say, I'm closing the public hearing, and the matter rests with the Commission.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor from Ms. Dean, and the motion is?
My motion is to move into committee of the whole to discuss this project openly amongst us.
And it's seconded by Mr. Parks. Is there any objection to going into committee of the whole? Okay, we're in the committee of the whole. By the way, that means that we sort of do away with our procedures and we can just talk amongst ourselves, so it's a public hearing, but nevertheless, it is a committee of the whole. Okay. Stacy, since you wanted to go into it, what do you want to talk about?
Well, I know that, Mr. Chair, I know one of the questions that everybody had was, I shouldn't say everybody, but several people did, about the fence going on the north side of the property. We now look and see that there is a pretty good bench there, and having a fence may or may not really be a barrier between the two subdivisions. The people that have spoken about the fence, I was curious what your thoughts are now that, after seeing the picture on page 26, what your thoughts are.
Let me speak to that for a second. I'm fairly familiar with this property, and I know this bench that he's talking about. It may be six feet, five feet, and it varies from the whole property as you're looking to the north, standing on this property. I have really two concerns. One is, I'm not sure that that fence would get the results that we might want, not knowing a property like you do. But however, I think that landscaping would be a huge benefit. This place is barren. It was a gravel pit. There's very little mature vegetation, and I think Mr. Peterson's idea about putting more mature trees is an excellent, an excellent solution to the problem. You know, I have some concern about how many and where they're placed, but I'm not a landscape architect. I would assume that we could put some restrictions in how many trees or how they had to be placed. And I know Ms. Pease has a better knowledge of that landscaping terminology, much better than I do. But I could support a statement of how much landscaping was going to go in that area to blind that piece off to some degree.
As we go through this, let's just use our machines so I can catch as to who wants to talk. That may make it a little easier. Ms. Pease?
I agree that after listening to the discussion on a fence, that the fence might or might not provide a more pleasant visual. If the fence is, as Mr. Peterson described, built to specifications, I don't think intermittent fences would be, you know, a bad thing. And that apparently is what will result, intermittent fences. But I do think vegetation would help. The bench, as described, is not, it's not that high, and so the slow break as it's, by itself, doesn't really provide kind of a visual sense of separation, in my opinion. But putting in some trees would, and I'm encouraged to hear that the trees will be reared on-site, because that means the ones that can't take the conditions are going to die, and the trees that they do have to transplant should take hold. So I would be interested in possibly a condition that required some trees of a decent caliber planted along that lot line. And then I didn't quite catch all of Ms. Yoshimura's suggestions about locating different models along that back lot line, but I would like to hear more about that and what you were trying to achieve, Ms. Yoshimura. Well, my recommendation is to limit the type of dwelling unit on the north side, that is south of Big Bend Loop, to single-family residences only, with just a substitution of product type, not a lowering of density. And I think with a little work, the petitioner can probably accommodate that. I think that that would, I have a few concerns about what the width of those units would be, because I would like them to be as compatible as possible with Big Bend, but I am going to leave that at the discretion of the petitioner, in terms of the width of the dwelling units, to create some sort of compatibility. But my recommendation would be to limit the north side to single-family residences only.
And just let him figure out how to spread it, the rest, the ones that they're moving out to, maybe to the south side.
That not all of them are going to be 20 feet wide.
Yeah, okay. Stacy, go ahead.
One of the issues I wanted to talk about, too, was acoustic. I know that came up several times. You know, the STC rating for the homes, is that enough? Is it enough to say "shall investigate," or do we need to change the recommendation to different wording? When it comes to the acoustic, I know that five-star rated homes are very, very solid, very tight homes that don't allow a lot of sound from outside to begin with, so going to an STC rating 55 is going to put them in, you know, in the same range. It isn't that much of a difference, but do we want to change that wording, "shall investigate" to something different?
Okay, Mr. Wilson?
I can speak to that, since I've been kind of on that topic here tonight. I had some, a suggested way to accomplish that, maybe a little different wording. On page 19, number 6, the applicant shall, instead of investigate, put the word "employ" building construction techniques to mitigate and reduce airport noise impacts to interior noise levels in the homes no greater than a sound transmission class 55.
Okay, that's a way to do it.
The, I need to repeat it apparently. The applicant shall employ building construction techniques to mitigate and reduce airport noise impacts to interior noise levels in the homes no greater than 55, STC 55.
We'll just have to keep that in mind when the time comes when we make the motion.
I mean, instead of investigate.
I have a question on that.
Okay, Mr. Frous?
What does STC 55 mean, and what is the economic impact to the home?
Somebody else has.
I know what DNL is, but...
It's here on our page 19, "sound transmission class," but I still don't know exactly.
I'm reading the same thing. I just don't understand what 55 means.
I don't think that an STC rating necessarily, that there's necessarily a one-to-one relationship between that and a decibel rating inside the house. In other words, we're looking for quiet but different types of sounds transmit differently through solids. I think somebody made a point somewhere in the narrative that there's a difference between low-frequency sounds like airplanes and bells and whistles and stuff like that. So I don't, I think we're treading on thin ice here as far as our concept of what we're forcing on the applicant. I don't think we know enough about it to put a definitive number in there, since we don't know, as experts, what those numbers mean, so.
Well, that's my concern, is what that number means.
I'm somewhat sympathetic to this, although I think the statement was made that current, current high-quality construction, which I'm sure they're going to employ, results in relatively quiet homes. And I don't know that, since the rest of the subdivision has been built with probably no better construction quality than is going to go into these and have sold successfully, and I haven't heard from the testimony tonight that the sound issue is a big deal for, although they weren't asked to testify about that, but I don't, I don't think, I don't think we need to beat this horse real hard, so personally.
Yeah, I tend to agree. It's just that, under the department's recommendations, they've got this statement about investigating, but there really isn't anything to do after you investigate. That was my concern, and so my original concept was, okay, investigate and implement standard industry construction techniques. That's, at least it says you're going to do something.
Yeah, but if you're telling them they've got to implement something, you've got to tell them what standard they're implementing to, and I don't think we know how to put that into concrete terms.
Maybe strike the whole sentence.
I don't, yeah, I think it's a throwaway.
Yeah.
Well, there's another way to do this. On page 53 of the bullet, there, it talks about in soundproofing the dwelling to 45 DNL interior noise levels. Now, that's apples and apples, but again, I don't know whether that's an onerous requirement.
DNL flu. Yeah, I'd be a little nervous about that.
Can we ask anybody that?
We can ask the staff.
Mr. Chairman, I'm reading a letter from the noise manager of the airport and from our noise people at Health and Human Services, trying to find out comparison between DNL and STC, so I'll let you know if I find it.
Okay, we'll move on to other things. Anybody else have any things they wish to discuss? Ms. Pease?
Yes, I would like to come up with some kind of language that requires a little further look at the traffic situation at West Park Drive and West Diamond Boulevard. And I understand that the overall traffic from the full West Park development is reduced because there's been more open space in the Lucy Pit and so on, but I'm not convinced that there wouldn't be kind of an acute traffic situation at this intersection, because the density's coming out those access streets and the fact that it's so close to West Diamond, it seems that would be the way most of the traffic would go. It's unfortunate that we don't have a map showing the original turn patterns and showing the route that you'd go if you went north, so we can make a little better estimate of that. But I think staff should, and if there appears to be, you know, a level of service that's going to be a problem, or if there's been a traffic, you know, a history of traffic accidents at that intersection, we heard intimations, I think staff should look at it further. I don't have any more specific recommendations as to doing something about it, but if there appears to be a problem created by this phase, then, you know, the developer should in some way be involved in signage, whatever, safety.
Should we have something sort of resolved with traffic? I mean, that's a very typical thing that we use, you know?
I would like to, with at least some real numbers applied to what the traffic peaks might be there, and whether there's been a history of accidents to date. Not a full traffic impact analysis, that's not called for, but some sort of numbers updating the original report.
Okay, Ms. Dean?
The petitioner did mention that Diamond was going to be upgraded. Maybe staff can speak to that, that issue.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Dean, I'm afraid not. I have no information on Diamond improvements from the Traffic Department.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else people wish to discuss?
Did we get?
We haven't gotten an answer yet. I've got one item that I wrote down here, is basically the water situation. Do we want to put anything in there about no use of existing wells or groundwater? I mean, I realize that they've plugged or decommissioned that one well that was giving 80,000 gallons a year, or a day, so that's a non-issue, but, you know, if we just basically say that you've got to use the clutin of water out of a hydrant somewhere if you're doing dust control, then we will effectively, you know, done away with the concern that people have about drawing groundwater out. That would be one way to deal with it. And the other thing is, you know, I assume this new development is going to use city water and sewer, so there's not a concern about drawing, new people drawing well water or contaminating existing well water. So that's a non-issue. So, but I think maybe we ought to put something in there about probably the ground, or for dust control, that you just don't use off-site water for.
Did we ask the petitioner if they'd have any heartburn about a statement such as Mr. Eisen's? I don't think so. He already said you weren't going to do it, so, okay. Might give other people some comfort.
Yeah. Okay, Mr. Barrett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to your most recent remark, I'm not aware that there are any existing wells on track one, but it is specifically mentioned in the report that only muni water and muni sewer will be used. There will be no wells on the property. Regarding the noise level, page 57 is the comments from DHHS. Since a DNL is an average of events over, since a DNL is an average of events over a 24-hour period, I don't think there is a real comparison between STC and DNL, but Tony does mention in a short paragraph in the middle of the page, quote, "My limited understanding is that an STC of 55 would reduce the sound levels transmitted into the building." And remember, we're talking about properties that are in the 60 to 70 DNL area. Would reduce the sound, an STC... Would reduce the sound, an STC of 55 would reduce sound levels transmitted into a building by about 55 decibels. I think he means two about 55 decibels, because he goes on to say, "Which is approximately what human speech is." That's the best I can find.
Sir?
However, you can achieve an STC of 55 on a party wall because it is a solid wall and doesn't have windows and doors in it, and it typically has more, more components like drywall and separated studs that don't transmit sound. I think if you're talking about the exterior shell of a house, again, I think you're, you may be imputing some rather significant costs to get to that sort of a rating. I don't know, and I'm not willing to go there without knowing it, so.
Can, is, like we did just before, can we ask the petitioner whether that would be costly, too costly? And would it be effective?
I don't know if you can achieve that on an exterior wall. I couldn't tell you that. There's only one sound expert that I know of, his name is Earl Mullins, he doesn't live in the state. We've brought him up numerous times on multifamily projects to help us determine how to build wall assemblies so we can achieve the highest STC rating we possibly can. I have no idea how to do that on an exterior wall with windows in it.
Well, maybe if we can just ask it through our decision, ask the staff to work with the petitioner and do the best they can. I guess that's where we're at.
I'd like to make one comment on your question. In the public offering statement that I gave Chairman, on page 14, it does address some minimum construction standards for development within West Park, and it also talks about the airport proximity. So that may help you in considering whether this issue's been addressed or not.
Where is that now?
I believe it's on page 14 of the public offerings statement that I gave to Chairman.
This was something that's laid on the table. Maybe you can read it.
Okay, it talks about 21B airport proximity, and this is an updated public offering statement for West Park, a planned community to airport proximity. The property is located in close proximity to Anchorage International Airport and subject to aircraft noise. Proximity of the community to the airport requires that homes must be designed with the following mitigation construction techniques. One, maximum 5/8 double-pane windows filled with argon gas or triple-pane windows. Two, minimum R36 insulation in ceiling slash roof, and minimum R19 insulation in existing, in exterior walls. So 5/8 double-pane windows, R36 in the ceiling, R19 in the walls.
Did it say 5/8 insulated glass with argon or triple-pane?
No, no. 5/8 double-pane windows filled with argon gas or triple-pane. Take your choice.
Well, again, everything you read there is minimum, minimum construction. And I guarantee you, they're going to put more insulation in the lids than that, and possibly more, you know, more in the walls, but, you know, it's, that's very typical. You couldn't pass a code review with less than that.
Could any more discussion? Well, let's get ourselves out of the committee of the hole, and let's get on with this thing. So I need a motion to get out of the committee of the hole. Been moved, seconded by Ms. Pease. I assume this is to get out of the committee of the hole and return to our normal organization. Is there any objection? Okay, we're now back constituted as the commission, and we need to get a motion on the table. It's been moved by Ms. Dean, seconded by Mr. Prus. Ms. Dean, would you please state your motion?
In the matter of 2011-013, I move to approve the final conditional use for residential planned unit development in the R1A district according to AMC 21.50.020 and 21.50.130A, B, and C, to allow up to 5.4 dwelling units per acre.
Okay, and it's subject to what conditions?
Subject to the department recommendations on page 18, 19, 20, and 21, with the following changes. And I'm open to friendly amendments. On number six, change the word from investigate to employ. Add a condition number 15 to using trees of four-inch caliper on the north side of the property line. Number 16, north side of property, only single-family houses. Number 17, no use of existing wells in this subdivision.
Could you repeat your substitution in the first paragraph in condition six?
Condition six, and substitute the word investigate and use the word employ.
And Ms. Dean, on 15, trees of four-inch caliper planted on the north side, is that correct?
Yes, on the north side of the property line. And I apologize, I should have flushed that into a sentence better than that. I'm hoping that somebody has a suggestion on how we can word that to give the impression that they need to have trees as screening between the two subdivisions. And I'd like to see larger trees in the four-inch caliper range, since Bob has suggested that he would like to do that.
I'm going to ask if maybe Ms. Yoshimura can help with the requirement on the vegetation, but I did, let's go ahead and do that one, I had a different friendly amendment.
Okay, so Ms. Yoshimura, go ahead.
I think what we should add is that these four-inch tree, caliber trees shall be in addition to the required landscaping for each phase of the condo development.
I accept that.
But through the...
I'll stick to the second rule.
Yeah. Through the chair, should there be a quantity, a spacing, a L3 landscape density, something of that nature? Thank you, one per dwelling unit. In addition to that required by the condominium ordinance for landscaping.
I'll accept that.
Okay. In other words, if there is a tree that's required for the condominium development itself, that tree doesn't count. Okay.
Okay, and that's okay with you, Ms. Prus? Okay, fine. Okay, Ms. Pease, you had a friendly amendment.
Yes. I would like to add a condition to update the current accident rates or safety concerns and traffic counts and level of service on West Park and West Diamond projected to result from the PUD, and to resolve with staff any need for the developer to contribute to any necessary upgrades to mitigate traffic impacts.
Ms. Dean, do you accept that as a friendly amendment?
This is a tough one, because it's sort of like the last guy is paying for other people's problems. And I don't know if it's fair to burden Peterson Group with these types of things which could result in something like a traffic light, or the expense of putting something like that in, which could be very expensive. I would say that I would have to say no, I couldn't accept that, due to the expense of all of those potential issues.
Okay, Ms. Pease, do you want to make that as a motion, and then we'll vote it up or down?
Yes, I will, and I'll speak to my motion.
Okay, wait, let's see if we've got a second first. Let her get it in first.
There you go.
Okay, do we have a second? Could you repeat your motion, so we know what we're dealing with?
And if you listen to the words, I'm not assuming that there will be any developer contribution. Update the current accident rates or safety concerns, the traffic counts, and the level of service on West Park and West Diamond resulting from the planned PUD. Resolve with staff any need for the developer to contribute to upgrades to mitigate traffic impacts.
Okay, do we have a second? Do you have a second? That motion dies for lack of a second. Okay, wait a minute, she's getting behind her, so let's stop. Okay. We're working faster than the machine, I'm amazed.
Ms. Pease, you know, I think it's important to have this information. I quite frankly think that if you are going to do a development of this size, I disagree with staff, and I have in the past, about getting some additional traffic information. The problem that I have is what to do with the information once we get it and it's obtained, because I do agree with Ms. Dean's that the last person in shouldn't have to be responsible for any traffic congestion, that these things should have been considered before. Also, I thought the comment about the school not coming off, going off a Lucy Street onto Kincaid was sort of interesting, actually, which isn't what I had anticipated or thought would happen as far as the school site plan is concerned. So I think the information is important, but I don't know what the result could be, you know, and I don't know what kind of street Diamond is. Is it a city street? Is it a state street? Is it a state street?
Okay, we don't have a motion on the floor, we just have some discussion there. Okay, fine. Ms. Pease?
It dies.
We have the main motion on the floor, but it died, or the amendment died. We still have a main motion on the floor. So is there any further friendly amendments that anybody wishes to propose? Or any amendments that anybody wishes to propose? Is there any further discussion? Ms. Pease?
Yes, shall I allow the maker of the motion to speak first, or go right ahead?
Well, you have a motion to change what's on the floor?
No, no.
You don't, okay.
Findings, I thought we were...
Okay, we need some findings, and then once, we also need to make sure that we've got the actual recommendations here correct as far as the conditions. So what I'd like to do first is verify our conditions, and then we'll go to the findings. So as, and I'll try and speak to it, so anybody can correct me if I missed it in my notes. But we're going for approval. We want to change condition six to re, is it the term employ? Okay, so we replace the word investigate with employ, and we're adding three additional finding, or three additional conditions, 15, 16, and 17. And 15 deals with trees of four-inch caliper on the north side of property in addition to required landscaping as for the condominium guy, right? Okay, and then one per dwelling, one per dwelling unit, okay. All right, and then 16 dealt with the fact that we can only have single-family homes along the north boundary. And 17 was that there would be no wells on the site. Okay, that's what we've got as far as conditions of approval. And Ms. Pease, would you like to do some findings?
This planned unit development meets the conditions of AMC 21.50.130. In particular, it shows a mixing of compatible land uses and residential densities and housing Although the neighborhood adjoining has single-family housing, there has been the intent in the development plans for West Park at various times to have duplex housing. So this, although caught, as we heard, a number of residents by surprise, this has not been a new idea for West Park subdivision. With regard to specific conditions that we've added, 21.45.200 talks about transition space for conditional, oh, wait, is that conditional use? I thought this was for planned unit development. The types of transition or buffering that we talked about, of those types that we talked about, the idea of additional vegetation seems to add the most value to the neighborhood. As someone pointed out, this is a gravel pit, it's fairly devoid of large vegetation, and we've required a fairly large-caliper vegetation on the north property line, which should enhance both the existing part of West Park and this new planned unit development. We've also attempted to create the best possible compatibility by having single-family dwellings on the north property line. This is in response to concerns from some property owners that they prefer a single-family continuity, and it helps hopefully to alleviate concerns about any property values. We did hear that mixing densities has been a successful strategy in other developments as well, such as Discovery. We also were, we listened to concerns from nearby residents about groundwater and impacts to the residences that depend on wells. Because of past apparent connection between the use of well water during construction and impacts on... and impacts on arsenic or other unidentified sludge in nearby well water, we've specified that groundwater will not be used, wells will not be used from this particular tract. We also heard testimony from the consultant that there have been deep monitoring wells placed near the groundwater pond since West Park construction started up, and we were shown evidence from that well, that test well, that nitrates have been diminished over, have diminished over the years since the test well went in and the construction took place. And apparently, that well was placed at the suggestion of some of the earlier studies. Finally, with regard to traffic, we did hear concerns about the impacts of traffic, since this is a denser layout than in the existing subdivision. We decided that the burden of alleviating any traffic at the West Park-West Diamond intersection shouldn't fall on the last developer in the subdivision. We also heard that the overall traffic from the whole West Park development is less than was originally projected, not because of this development, but because some of the housing originally intended will not happen, because there's open space, and there's a school which will have, has yet to be built and is down the line some years. So for those reasons, the impacts of this project appear to have been dealt with, and the concerns of the community, we've tried to address in a manner appropriate. And in general, the build-out of what's kind of a dusty gravel pit will be an enhancement to the community over the middle and long term after construction is finished. So we've all been watching the sand-like redevelopment take place, and the Peterson Group has some attractive levels of landscaping and some creative use of open space, which appear to be, will enhance the community as it's built out. So for those reasons, I'll be supporting, and please feel free to add.
Mr. Frederick?
The other standard that is required to be met is AMC twenty-one fifty oh two oh, which says that it furthers the goals and policies of the comprehensive development plan and conforms to the comprehensive development plan in the manner required by chapter twenty-one oh five. And important to put in there that comprehensive plan policies, three, seven, eight, eleven, twelve, sixteen, forty-five, forty-nine, fifty, and fifty-five are applicable to and supported by the development, and I will be supporting this motion.
Anybody else have any comments? Is there any objection? No objection, that passes unanimously. Just a reminder that I think next week we have a meeting with the director. I think it's next week, right. And I have time reserved on that for us to talk about parliamentary procedures.
Been scheduled yet?
I think, yeah, I think so.
And we've been notified?
No. It's just sort of penc, it's on the calendar and it's penciled in. And I talked to Jerry, and he's planning on it. So I think it's Wednesday next week or the week after.
Okay.
Anybody got anything else that they wish to talk about? Thank you for working together tonight, I think it went pretty well. So we need a motion to dismiss.
Make a motion with your turn.
Do we have a second? Yes, we've got a second. Any objection? No, let's go home.